I would like you to firstly forgive us if there is anything that happens and you might not understand why it happens. Because I see that there is mostly predominantly black people in this venue.
So, me ina nabakwazi, so sebezi sizzulu kakulu.
So myself and those who are able to, we will use predominantly Isizulu.
Goba ngaba nguti ninglaitula ni kulumisulu.
Because I think the majority of us here speaks, you speak Isizulu.
Odakani zostolela ngoba yingobo yeparlamentele esengayola.
You have to forgive us though because this is a parliamentary process that has brought us here.
Nogogo kushuguti, fanelese kwa zuktoligasitoli gele guisi ngisi, uguenselugu ti abandababuka yo namshanjie. Eh, ushelo lwaseparlamentele bakwazi nabukozanoma bengekola.
So, we will have to then interpret into English. So that those who are watching who are not here can be able to follow what is happening in this venue.
So senkushuti nengabuzivu kuti, isngisige manje sesitoli gelo abani, goba umasi la asbonye ngati kukona bandube si ngisi. Ses, ses kuluma nabanye abanga panze, ababukele la ana nozakuetu eshamba nabongenzekuti bangasizwisuzu.
So don't ask why we are using English whilst we can speak Isizulu. That is because we are doing it for the benefit of those who are not here, who are watching. And also those colleagues of ours who are also not Isizulu speakers.
Ni zogwazu kuti, eparlamentele kukona bandabasuka kui fundazo eza shuga shuga ene. Abakulumi ilimi ezingafani, egungenzeku kutabanye babo, nobabe ngaspidilizisizulu. Odabangalibabeni kenga yoksiswa nokuskuluma yenzelesu akala.
So as you know, in parliament, we have colleagues from various provinces who speak different languages. Some might be able to hear Isizulu and try and speak it. But they might not be able to speak in a clear and understandable manner.
So stralu kolo se na dogoge pan.
And we would like to apologize for that initially.
Eh, jobasi la nage siboya eparlamentele negazuelo.
As we are here, we come from National Parliament.
Sizela ana, sietimba lekomedi, lagwa mineral resources and energy, kushutile zimbo apanzi nezamani.
We are here as part of the Portfolio Committee on Minerals and Energy. The committee that deals with, that which is mind and also energy.
Yekenu kuti kenge thulo zakueteshamba nabo.
May I then take this opportunity to introduce my colleagues?
Eh, ngale ekale ni sinomshonishwa obaba Omailen.
On my left is the Honorable Mylen.
Eh, etuzewa ke sino honor, usinomshonishwa eh, Umatdogwe.
Next to him is Honorable Matdogwe.
Eh, etuzewa mila, sinoba ba omashawle.
Next to me here is Honorable Mashawle.
Ngala ana, eh, etuzewa mi, sinomshonishwa Obilankulu.
And then on my right is Honorable Bilankulu.
Eh, sibeno ba ba omshonishwa ovolmarans.
And also next to him is Honorable Volmarans.
Siboya sibeno omshonishwa obaba uzungula.
And next to him is Honorable Zungula.
Eh, nokulmayo eh, Luzipo.
And I am Honorable Luzipo.
Ushalo we komedi.
The Chair of the Committee.
Eh, ngala ngemuvu manbonita fula, gabando abaslegelala yo ogushuguti zizebenzi. Zaseparlamentele ezaslegelala yo, oguti eh, zikongke zobekushiwalana, zitate zukpale pansi. Uguenselugu ti kubekuzo oguyoshalakukona, oguti satfiki lela emshatuze engwelezane.
And behind us seated at the table, that is behind us, our colleagues from parliament who are assisting us with capturing everything that is being done, just like we are here today, they will capture everything that was discussed here in Mchatushe.
So, ngalo ogogenkabango kuti, ngogwenzalukuti, azfunukuti, nitasi tati ngoguti, neyazu kuti nikuluma nobani. Oganye ngoba ni abafiki ne pakatukui.
And we also don't want to assume that you know who is talking to you or who, who are the people that are amongst you today.
Silana kenge ngoba, umnyango wesimpawa pansi namantla. Uye wenza iparamiso, oguti kubekona is tribielo, umteto okondene, nemboni kakesi. Umteto awukona, owakalukubakonubekumteto ngonyaga 2001, ndabaybiza petilizunguti, yikes Act of 2001.
We are here today because the, excuse me, the Department of Minerals and Energy proposed some amendments to an act, an act that is known as the Gas Act of 2001.
Ikometige lithe umalshesi, selinike ziwalezi is tribielo. Lati umalbuga lati uyobangono, oguti skale siyoguzwa izifosa bandu. Napamukoguti sitokra sipendule kulesi is tribielo.
So as a committee, when we were presented with these amendments, we felt it was important for us to first find out the views, find the views of the people before we can sit down and deliberate on these amendments.
Gobomteto kwa separlamentele sivume legi lukuti, singazufuma oganyesipigi se is tribielo. Singayanga kabantu, o, sizuvu mesipigi se is tribielo, umanga besesiboya kabantu. Odaketi nasitati lukuku kuti, ngabakushetala siyolalela izifosa bandu kuti ziti.
As part of the parliamentary process, as a committee, we can approve these amendments without consulting the community. Or we can approve the amendments after having consulted the community. So we chose as a committee to consult the community first before we deliberate or approve these amendments.
Ah yes, ilukis, asisvume pele, umastanda singazupigis.
We don't just approve them if we like or if we feel necessary, we will then not approve them.
Eh, kya astalelikenga lendoguti, sitazvonye.
This, this.
Yonalendongi ngibonangi ilungi sache goba, abanyabasuka umabati, umasektoli kavati utweje kpele singafu. Sinelungele otinakala nokusvuma, futumasisbonukutakzona sipigis.
Let me correct that, we have the right or the authority to approve or not approve. So we don't want to have a situation where people think that we are just approving. We also have the authority not to approve.
So oguzakuetuge laanasizolalele izifose, egballegi lukuti, nali ninelungele. Lokusvuma lesi is tribielo, futininelungele lokuspigisa, umanisbonukuti azhamzani kentelenkabanga kai.
As we are here as a committee, we also want to mention that you also have the right to approve these amendments or not to approve these amendments if they don't meet your requirements.
So azfuni kumoduka ba kwenindawo, eh, goba gushenalogusutraz, oguti. Agusho oguti omopaliswa, goba bani bebesa, ukpalisa lapayana se kushuguti, uyayibo pezela. Ukfulanene ninalesi is tribielo.
Also I need to mention that by registering, as you are registering outside, that doesn't necessarily mean that you are committing yourself or approving these amendments. In one area, we had a similar situation where people did not want to register because they assumed that meant that they are approving these amendments.
Ukpalisa kushugutubukoni emshanganue ni, norma se kukishwa ama rekord. Fanele kvelu kuti, umanga be umiste Luzipo, umshonishu Luzipo, utee emshanganue ni. Kubonagale na lapansi, oguti ngambela uka na upalisili, obumozo shumundu ktolakalu kuti, lapansi akondisho kutwebekoni emshanganue ni, ufale nokuti ukulumela umundu. Oganye nepale umundu ngakaza bekonemshanganue ni.
By registering, it is to ensure that when records are checked, if Honorable Luzipo said something, the records must reflect that Honorable Luzipo was at the meeting. So that it is not taken as if there is something that was said by somebody who was not in the actual venue, in the meeting.
Dogoge abazyo, tinabanyebetu sagasa, balokwaknendokwak, ubegwenga neskolene lukute, ayumanise klasi. Uzo upalala ba ababangumsinda ma noise makers. Gobonago, ya kwa zupaluku kuti umundu i noise maker, odake kwe klasi.
As a school going child, I remember I used to have in school, those who were responsible for writing down the names of those who were noise makers. And sometimes people would be written down as noise makers where else they were not in school.
So azfuni kugwensalelo kuti.
So we don't want to make that mistake.
Silana kenge ngoba kui is tribielo esbe kwe, esajiswe umnyango. Angikulungisalo, asuwonati umnyango wesimpawa pansi namantla. Sili komedi laseparlamentele, eyey tumbiko, iyaya eparlamentele, ayikumnyango.
Let me also start by saying the reason we are here as the Portfolio Committee. And maybe emphasize that as the Portfolio Committee, we are not the department. Our report goes to parliament, not the Department of Minerals and Energy.
So kwenzindawo kwe sigozona, kwe yekuti, antazakalezi is tribielo zitu, akzone zitu lezi is tribielo. Kuyoba yezitu, umanga be sesikwazile natukotra zatati ngomo.
In some areas, we were asked to explain these amendments. And we had to say, no, these are not our amendments. They will become our amendments when we have deliberated on them and took, and took decisions on them.
Godaké umangi kapezu, oguti, ziti nilesi is tribielo, ezusho umnyango wesimpawa pansi namantza.
If I can briefly state what these amendments from the Department of Minerals and Energy are proposing?
Ogo, egonye kwa zoziti, ufuna oguti gulungi swesimo, soksebenza, kuyonalemboni kakesi.
Amongst others.
Gukwesimo sa namshanjie.
Amongst others, it is to try and regulate or fix some of the operational matters around this industry according to today's requirements.
Oguti kubekona inzalozokfaga ngapakati, lababa ngapanzee, behuwaba be ngapanzee. Ugualimboni kakesi nokuti, ezoktu ta esesinobtrepeche, ingabe zenzekaganjani, nokuti zinazo, sibeyi ngonye yalomteto.
In order for people who are outside of the mainstream participation in this industry, for them to be able to get access and also to see how a technology can also play a part in creating an inclusive process or trading in this particular industrial sector.
Ziti futezinye gi is tribielo zakona, oguti namshanjie soknobtrepeche obusha. Egfanelukuti, mopegelelege, ngapanzee kuku kuti, eh, iskatesningi kakesi, umanga be ihanjiswa, ihamba ngamapayipi. Manje se ukonezinye i, 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 inzala, ezikonasobtrepeche. Ungatolakalu kuti, asikogulomteto, owabewa ngo 2001.
It is also to provide for new technologies of transporting gas that were not provided for in the previous Act of 2001.
It is ama futukutasaxebenza sana, pakati, kweninkampane zizmele, nesezisbizapetilizunguti private sector. Kanye nalaba abainkampani, oganye inzalazoksebenza, ngapansi, kuwalimboni, kubekuziinkampanes kahulmein.
It is also to try and bridge the gap between the operations of the private sector and also the government sector within this minerals and energy sector, particularly gas.
Itzikizama futukuti kini se isanza, sokpegelala, oguti, lababa sebenzaklimboni, bayahamsana, nomteto, ossebenza ngayolemboni.
It is also to ensure that the regulatory process is enhanced amongst those who are working within this sector.
Kwenzinye kese zindesa nomteto zamoguisinja oguti, kulomteto ka 2001, kune zindesa singakati. Oguti, zizo, wenzo akanjani, umagunkona unghamzani, nomteto.
Part of the things that the amendments are trying to fix is actually trying to get the processes to be clear in terms of what is done when things are not done according to the act.
Isbonelukuti, nomteto bunga asukuti, umacholakalu kuti, aulande langumteto. Ingabe kufanele, umau, u, 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 unigazwa iskundiso, nitoboni iskundiso nganigazwa sona.
For example, the act did not prescribe what kind of punitive measures can be instituted if you are found to be in violation of the act.
Manje kulesi is tribielo, siti esini, eksenyasazo, ukulmeni ufuna oguti, umai koninzala. Ognyane umundu ashauliswe, o tumillion randi, gogosuku.
In this, in part of these amendments.
Umanga be pulomteto.
Part of these amendments are proposing that if one is found to have transgressed the provisions of the act, then they can be fined as little as two million renz if they are found guilty of a transgression.
Futi iti, ngakwazuki, ilicens ukulmeni, oganye, lababa pegene nemboni, lendosi bizapetilizunguti regulate. Akwazuki afake, eh, apatate in, inwati, emlendosi ama license. Walabo abahuwaba yo, umanga be, nengahambi guximtitwin, or asmishoguskashane.
It also seeks to empower the regulator to be able to remove or take away licenses from those who are found to be in transgression or even suspend the licenses for a particular period.
Ezinye, ezinye is tribielo sakona, siti kese zamukvigela, abasibensi, gokwenzimpi lo nokvigeleka kwabo, kuesimo soksebenza. Kanye, nimpakati, okshanga ni sanese mve.
It also, one of the amendments also seeks to address issues of health and safety for the workers, for the community as well as for the nature.
Ubewusu shofutukuti uzamu kutulegelele, lababe bekate bengishoma tuba ngiskatese jule. Oguti naboba kwa zungena klimboni, kwenzewislimsego sokuti, umabengelele, abato luktrindesaleka, basbonese bekishela ngapanjie, ngayamteto beki.
It also seeks to level the playing field so that those who were previously disadvantaged or unable to participate in the sector, they do gain participation. And also when they do participate, there are no laws that prohibit them from participating meaningfully.
Ogonye kenga kushuguti kukpegelalu kuti, izipin taga, eh, zo zigahulmeni, oganye izimo. La uhulmenene sivumelano namanyamazu, lagungenzekakonukuti, kubenukteki sokomteto. Uguenselugu kuti nesozivumelano, zikwazukuti, zehamzane, ne simo sasenengizima Africa, ngakuyonalemboni ye, 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 kes.
It is also to look at what structures are in place and also what agreements are in place between government and other countries. So as to make sure that whatever agreements that are in place make it easier for the participants in this sector to participate meaningfully.
Silana kenge oguzoguzwa izifose.
We are here to get your opinions.
Umanga be, sespu malana, siajula, sia etegwini.
When we are done here, we will be proceeding to Etewini?
This is a tukusukwasi tazama ifundazo sinazo, zu nine.
Maybe let me explain, we have nine provinces.
Godwa askwazuka hamba wonge, sesapega oguti, izipifundazo, tintegakakuulu, gule, gutabo, olufana nalo, olu. Oganye, yaguneyimboni, eh, ezasabenza kakulu ngakkes.
We cannot go to all nine provinces, but we sat and looked at which provinces have major role players in this gas sector.
So isfundazo sa kwa zulnadal, kubeyezinye sasu, yukuti, sitindekakakuulu kusimeswana nalesi.
The province of Azul Nadal was one of the provinces that were seen as being integral in these kinds of matters.
Futisasesia bona kuguti, yake oyewazulnadal, ungazanga, ngayanga, etegwini, ngakumbi etegwini, eh, Etaben. Wange kute, kulewelu kulu kakulu, lambali umangenchanga, lisuke ngala li umangelo kuzanngoto kati. Eh, umute etegwini kunyono, la umute emshatuze, uzo shukute emshatuze, gusute mbangi. Godakesa zilukuti, yakesa nganiyateli emshatuze, yakesa nganiyateli etegwini, goba siazustu, izonanda wesprisius tindekeka fu.
Well, we could not have come to Azul Nadal and not go to Etewini. Even though Etewini is vast, but we knew we had to go to particularly in Deben. As you know, Etewini starts and stretches all the way to Njanga. As we know, if I am coming to Mchatushe, I need to come to Mbangi. Because I know if I'm dealing with these matters, these are the areas where these matters matter the most.
Silana rebanbageti, suzokwala ninanani, eh, umaninembonoi, ningesa. Ningesa bugushuguti ka, ayitinasamzana nomteto, godanmesesia slegelala kute, ngayesa tisizene satisiz.
We are here to speak to you as the community because we want to hear your views. And we, what would like you to tell us as well if you don't agree with certain things? Give us reasons as well so that we can be able to understand where you are coming from.
Ogo ktrinage, astoli sumakwenzekilo, goba siazukutumaksachenza bakona maputu. Ayikntibinzimajenga la emshatuze, okchola indawo, goba bekutshewo wongama olase emshatuza aktuwe.
Let me also apologize because when you are organizing, sometimes things can go wrong. We were trying to get a venue and all most of the values of the halls in Mchatushe were fully booked.
Godakesa ya chabulo ngobalasi la engwelezane, endaweni ningdesha yelo ajukuti, umasenza lamapublic hearings. Besu wenza i endaweni ezpakati etumatolope, ulogule, ulo wongumatolope besiyebu.
I'm very happy today we are here in Gwalezane because in other areas, we were lambasted because we were asked why are we organizing these public hearings in areas that are in town? At least here, we are here in the community.
So ge pati ge, askwazi chinukui itatuguzitateli holi, sia ngoguti lipi holo umkanti iskakuulu. Osnigenzalo, na obonai kuti ngalesuskat, liyobelinga sebenzi.
And also, we don't control which halls are available. We only accept the halls that the municipality offers us as being available at the time.
Nanjenga maju, masi etegwini kutwasizo, yewesville civic center.
Like when we go to Deben, we'll have to go to the Westville Civic Center.
Tinabisfisukuti masi etegwini, ngasesi MLAS.
We would have loved for us to go to MLAS if we were going to Etewini.
Odakwa, yilolo sitatage lo kusignikwa, senkushuguti, nengati kese iskati, awo. Nazos tata nazoswakena wene tiso, nganyela tolakala ngalesiskati, uyango kuto umkanti ngalesuskat. Yikupo wusniga, abasni, abaktrina, etrenenbesnigazao, wbesnigazabo. Amanengekebeschene woguti, aktuwe, kushutikubeyitlantlayeti woguti, bazogwazukuti, sizo bekala knina, engwelezane.
So I don't think that we take, we decide on our own as to where we hold these meetings. As I said, we take what the municipality gives us. And in this instance, I'm happy because we were able to be given this hall here in Gwalezane.
Eh, suzokwala kugutumaseskala sasizwimbonoi, nukutichini, eh, silegelela ne, kulesi si first corner. Oguti sishuni pe yonkimkomi beki, eh, ngapansi kwalisi fosakorona esikona. Uguenselugu kuti singatimsho, singatumasespu malaa, kuto ay, kwa sala, sikuinkenga, lupu banese bakritila bandule anda. Ulogo kwa kfigela, bababe sugakulela komedi laseparlamentele, so kwalajukutukuloko stunpani, ogosmili. Zo kwalukutiskatesesniki umundu abambiskat sake, uguenselugu kuti, lalo ozobeze mvakuakwa, akwazutoliskat. Ge pati komedi leparlamentele, linigazwa kpele i awamatatu, oguti lisabez. Yogo kela nduso kwalana tutukisbamzane kakulu, aukonukuti sia tanda, kwenyayoku kufanele naati laspumekona. Singabuyesuksi twa, angekenpinde nyambe niyegnezindawo zini, goba ntulasenpula imteto, enbegelweyo.
Also, I would like us before we start to highlight two things. One, we'd like to observe as much as possible all the COVID-19 protocols. So, because as you know, we don't want this public hearing to end up as being labeled as a super spreader event where people will say, we left and people started getting affected by COVID-19. And secondly, because of time, we have allocated time. And as a committee, we are given three hours to hold these public hearings. We would like for people to adhere to the time that is allocated to them so that others that speak after them can also have a fair chance to speak. And also by parliamentary process, we are not allowed to hold our hearings longer than three hours. And if we were to do that, we will not be allowed to go to public hearings because we would have transgressed some of our own processes as a parliamentary committee.
Ngena maju, okonjiwa waba unamba one, debanboga, debanalezi itule, esbe kweza kuxa pansi. Uzazotati unamba one, uzo obakuleskulisukala, number two, kanjalo kuzegofika, etunene.
So as you can see, the chairs that are in the middle, in the aisle, whoever is appointed at as number one will take the first chair, followed by the number two and the second chair and so on and so on.
So kwalakuti sbamzane, eh, suzokwazubamiskat, wongumundu laana ngukuthanda kuetu, ngakushuguti suwizi, umbonoyaba. Nizamukwenzakwonge lokungukthase ngoba, angfu nupindi ngbuyengizookthase. Number four there, number five and then number six. Please keep your numbers. So that on the second round, you will sit in that order. You can speak. So please don't ask us questions because we can't answer on these things because we haven't formulated an opinion yet. Thank you Chair. I'm Dum Sani Makatini. I'm from ANC. It's a pity that we have not seen the bill and I think we are also partially to blame. But you didn't speak about the workers as to where do they fit in the scheme of things. From my side, from the perspective of the workers, I suggest that we adjourn this process so that when we make a pronouncement, it is made from an informed position. Those are my submissions Chair, thank you very much. Good morning everybody, I'm Tembe Kumalo. From ANC. We are happy about the bill even though we haven't seen it. But what we would like to see as the community is this. When the programs pertaining to this guest start taking place. We would like to be informed of the pros and cons of the process because we know everything has a good and a bad side. As we are here, we live near RPM and we have encountered a number of issues that we've raised with the company but they dismissed them, I'm going to mention them since I'm here. Our children have Alzheimer's and others have TP, asthma, sorry asthma and TP. Also, those who are older, around about my age, you'll find that their eyes dry out, they don't have the fluid that is supposed to be in their eyes and their marrow also dries up and when we go to other areas, you find that these things are not supposed to be happening. And also, sinuses also are very extreme in this area. here in our area to come to us and let us know what the consequences or the risks are because currently, as the community, you'll find that even sometimes at night we will wake up and phone each other because the guests will be smelling so strongly in our areas. And we thank the parliament for respecting us and actually coming to speak to us and recognizing that we are also important and we matter, thank you. Chair of the committee and everybody who is in the meeting, I greet you. My name is Bongsin Masondo and I'm an ANC member. Chair, in the amendments to the bill, there was a part that touches on those who were previously disadvantaged to allow them to also actively participate in this industry. We also heard that when they are in the industry also, they will be protected because they are coming in from the outside and they were not part and parcel of the industry previously. My question then becomes what kind of support, whether infrastructural or skills, skills support will be provided when they are inside the industry? I'm asking because I heard that when you are now inside the industry, you are participating and you transgress or violate any of the regulations, you might be liable for a fine of up to 2 million rands. So how did you arrive at the 2 million ren fika, considering that for a new participant or a new player in the industry, they will not really would have had that amount of capital and also, how do you then find them if you haven't enough for them to be able to understand the regulations of the industry? Section 23 of the Operators Act speaks about the licenses to operate within the industry? I am vehemently opposed to the period of 25 years which is stipulated, which then qualifies a person to be able to be a participant. We've had instances where we were trying to get to use the land and we found that the land is under lease for 100 years and we are really against that because it then doesn't allow us to participate, so I'm proposing that maybe we review the leases over five years or 10 years and also, I am opposed to the 25 years issue as well as the issue of 2 million. Greetings. Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair and your panel. My name is Sipo Lameni from here in King Tadwaio. I'm a community member here and was born here. Honorable Chair, where it said update the act to ensure full compliance with government broad-based black economic empowerment legislative requirement, section 2. My issue is around section 2 which talks to the broad-based economic empowerment. I would like to urge you to take our views when you leave here because that one really does not help us. I'm here representing a company called Zanentlala Training Academy. Why I'm saying this is because I'm representing a company called Zanentlala Training Academy. I'm a manager of that company and the company is apparently owned by a black lady who's a youth, she's a woman, we youth, and me now, I'm a manager here, and I'm disabled. The company that I work for is directed by a young black woman who's youth and who's black and I'm also the manager and I'm also disabled because one, my eye doesn't work properly. So you will hear why I'm actually speaking today because as you said in your opening remarks and I did say that I'm from around here in King Tadwaio, you did mention that you chose this place because of its participation in mining and as you know, around here, we have RPM, we have Fosco, we have South 32, there are quite a number of mining companies. I was, I was, I'm wondering if you have invited these companies here as well because as I'm talking about this company that is run by a black, young black lady and employs a disabled person as I said, has not benefited in any way on the BEE processes of these companies, we have approached these companies but they have never given us an opportunity to participate or benefit. As I'm saying, one of the things that is used as red tape is that us as black people, we just want to run into businesses without having the requisite skills to be able to benefit from that business and as I'm talking to you, the young lady who's running this business is qualified, I myself, as a trainer, I'm qualified in occupational health and safety which I obtained from UNESCO and then I also got training for construction which I got from the construction seater and this BE situation that we find ourselves in is not helping us at all. And this BE situation that we find ourselves in is not helping us at all. I'm raising this BE issue because I think I've seen, if you consider our state president, Honorable Ramaphosa, he benefited from that, Tokyo Sekwale, Saki Makozoma, those were people who benefited from this BE and then it stopped there. For us as young people, we are not benefiting at all. It then leads you to stop pursuing the dream of uplifting your community through running a business and just go and take your qualifications and go and look for a job. So I'm urging you to really look at this because one of the things that is being used to keep us out of the industry is compliance. And as I'm standing here, I do have all sorts of compliance certificates and knowing very well that from nineteen ninety-four, we were always marginalized. Would like you guys to be able to hold us by the hand and support us so that we can be able to participate. Because only the people who are connected here in South Africa get to participate and benefit from these things. If you don't have connections, then you can just forget. So please, I urge you to be able to look at this thing and be able to assist us to also benefit from this.
By the way, compliance is, if you don't see that, I have a profile.
Let me also start by saying, let this not end here. We've always come to these gatherings and tried to raise our views, but it just ends there. So I'm saying this, Chair, as you are seated there, I do have compliance papers and if you can help me, I can give it to you now and you can take it somewhere. I would greatly appreciate that. Let it not just end here. Let us see something happening from these public hearings. Thank you. Thank you. I'm also a Lamini and I'm following Lamini. I'll try and be, not be a firebrand as the previous Lamini, even though there are things that are not working very well. I'm Filimon Lamini from Zalabantu and I'm a member of the community. It worries us that there are things that should have been addressed from nineteen ninety-four, but they are only being attended to now. Also, to know that these things are being attended to now since nineteen ninety-four, it really worries me because people who have been benefiting from this sector are white people who do not even live in the communities where these mines are and are not affected by all the things that affect us as the community. And we've been watching them benefiting for a long time whilst we are not getting anything. So I would also urge you, since you have taken down our names and you now know who we are, and also for the fact that we took time from our things to come here and talk to you. So that when things are in place and then people, black people can participate, let it not be a situation where others are more black than others when it comes to benefiting from this industry. I also would urge you to, also since you said you should not ask questions, I just want to give you food for thought. I work at Fosco and one thing I know that we work with at Fosco is we work with a dangerous gas called ammonia. Now, ammonia being dangerous can be carried easily by air and I would like the community to be trained so that they can be able to know what to do should there be a gas leak. Previously, there was an explosion in the company and gas leaked out and people inside the company were able to protect themselves. But members of the community who were passing by were affected seriously by this gas, such that others were critically ill and others passed away. And also, I also wish, as Mamu was speaking before me stated, for us to be trained so that we know exactly what to do. And as you know, since we're not participating in this industry. But the bottom line is, as the community next to these mines, we are always getting sick, we're getting sinus and so on and so on. So please, let us consider training our communities to be able to be better equipped to deal with these kinds of disasters. Thank you. Greetings, everybody. My name is Sile Mjali. May I greet the chairperson and the members of the community? I mean, the committee as well as the members of the community. Firstly, I'd like to say that I'm very happy that black people now can be able to participate in this gas industry and also benefit from it. I also would like to repeat what was said by Mr. Lamini, to say that we live in this area, I believe we live near RPM, but I don't know anything about gas from RPM. Growing up, I was raised by my grandmother. And when I was growing up, we had a lot of vegetation in our home. There were trees, guava trees, she used to plant, and various other vegetables and various other fruits. And there was a stream that ran behind our home. That stream we used to swim in. Nowadays, that stream cannot be used for swimming because there's always a reddish foam, a layer, foam layer that is on top and we don't know what that is, whether it's from this gas mining. And as a young man, I used to travel to school, walk for a distance of about five point nine kilometers and throughout this stretch, I used to have a lot of guavas that I used to be eating along the way. But now, there's none of that vegetation that is there and we are wondering whether this is not from this gas. And we'd like as a community to be trained so that we know exactly how to deal with these particular things. Also, another thing in my opinion that needs to be looked at is that we live in areas where we are surrounded or we are neighboring these companies, Mondi, RPM and Fosco. In some areas where I come from, Wambunambi, you'll find that opportunities are not the same in terms of being allocated to people. For example, you'll find that there's mbuyaz and there's mkiz. And you'll find that mkiz is being compensated because it is said that whatever is being done by the company is affecting his blood and therefore he's getting some form of preparation for that. But mkiz is not getting anything. Now, the question becomes, we are all affected by the same thing. How is it then that mbuyaz is being selected and getting some sort of preparation or assistance for being affected? I think it's unfair that we are all living in the same area and then you have selected people who are only receiving assistance. So I would also like to urge you, Honorable Chair and our great parliament, to consider us in terms of being trained about these gases. Because these gases, if they affect, they can affect us, but if they affect the food that we eat, then that means that we are doomed. And also, not only us, but our children are also doomed. And as you know, we have been sold out here in South Africa. So we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where even our children do not have a chance to survive or have a future. Thank you. Greeting, greeting to the chair. And his committee members. My name is Monlim Tete. What councillor for Ward Fourteen, Mlatuse, municipality? Firstly, let us thank the parliament for seeing the need to amend the bill.
It's long overdue.
It's long overdue. As you know, we are neighboring companies like Exaro, which is now called Foxtro, South Thirty-Two and others. According to public health or health laws, if an employee is being employed, they have to undergo a health examination, a checkup. And also, when they leave the company, they also have to be checked to see what has been the impact of working in the company on their health.
But the bill is quiet or silent when it comes to community.
But the bill is quiet or silent when it comes to issues of the community. As Lamini, the previous Lamini who was here, did say that sometimes you do have explosions, gas explosions. The, what was said before is that these companies would have these explosions. And when these explosions, okay, these companies only test their own workers. But they don't come and test the community to gauge what is the impact of these gases in the community. These companies have been operating around here for twenty-five years, as it has been said, and more. But they've never conducted any research or investigations to see what is the impact that they have in our health as the community. It has become the norm that when you are passing by Mondi, you would be, you'd experience a very pungent smell. And we've become accustomed to that. But what we don't know is what is the impact in our health. In our area, we have Shonox.
to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. I have a couple of things that I would like to raise. One, if you can have a series of workshops that will empower us as the community, so that we know exactly what this gas is all about, particularly on issues of health and safety, if there's any leaks, so that we know exactly how to protect ourselves. And secondly, now that we are being allowed to, or we're given an opportunity to participate, we need to be workshopd so that we know exactly how we can meaningfully participate. Not only just participate, but also know what are the implications of this particular gas in our communities. And lastly, before I sit down, I'd also like to propose that we do something that used to be done when I was still in school, where the community can be taken to these industries or these companies, and be able to see what happens or how these companies are run, so that they can also be part and parcel of initiatives to deal with disaster management when the disaster occurs. Thank you very much.
I'm Kuleganim Shongo, from Ward Thirty One.
Greetings to the Chair and his committee.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity that we've been presented with today.
I need to state this as well. We feel, as people who are government, we feel surprised because as much as we see the committee in front of us, but we can't get answers from the committee for questions that we may have.
May I request that we look at the bill that was given to us? Section twenty-six of eight forty-eight of two thousand and one, point number twenty.
Section twenty-six of two thousand and one.
And look at number D. benefiting from the system. As a result, we totally abandon the production. As a result, we are not seeing people from the community benefiting from the system. As a result, we totally abandon the production. Chair, I would like to speak to the section that talks to compliance. The speaker read the excerpt from the Act itself, from the bill itself. And then, on that, we have a company called Tronox that is in our area, which has not been compliant, but we haven't heard anything that has been done in terms of dealing with that company. And secondly, on the issue of health, we feel that we need to have at least infrastructure development around the issue of health, where we can be, as a community, accommodated in terms of getting a treatment or assistance on health issues. If infrastructure can be put in place, then we can look at the skills to be able to run that infrastructure, so that the community can be able to accommodate it according to their health needs relating to this gas as well. Speaking about safety, the companies like to say they put their workers first. But if you look at Matregane area and Tronox, you'll find that from Matregane to Tronox, there are no streetlights. And the workers there, from in the morning, early in the morning when they go to work, they have to walk in the dark. And also, even after work, when they come from work, going to their homes, they also walk in the dark. We don't know where the companies putting their workers first, if they are not providing a safety, a safe environment for their employees to be able to shuttle between work and their homes. they would engage in social responsibility and try and skill youth in the area of Matregane, so that they can be able to employ them, absorb them into their company. They did something where they trained, about out of ten youth that they trained, only three were given permanent jobs, and the rest are sitting at home and doing nothing. Would like to urge you, Chair, and your committee to look into this, because we feel it is very, it's also very important for us as a community.
May I request that we move to page twenty-two?
In pursuit of the object of this act, the gas energy regulator may expropriate land or any right in or over respect of land on behalf of the licensee. So, in order to say that, I would also like to take you to page twenty-two, section thirty-two, which talks about expropriation of land. The speaker read the section one, subsection one of that particular section, where it deals with expropriation of land on behalf of licensee or an applicant. And his, the question was, Chair, we live in, under traditional leadership, and those are the people that are responsible for handling issues of land in our areas. Now, if you're saying the regulator is responsible for expropriating land, where does that leave our traditional leadership? Does it mean that they are ineffective and they don't have any powers insofar as implementation or these issues are concerned? Also, in my word, we have, we had Tronox, which was operating there. Up till now, we don't know what the impact was. And also, our roofs are red, and we don't know what is that substance that is affecting our roofs. We also, secondly, we also had a situation where we don't have anything that we can point at as something that this company has left for us as the community. Lastly, as I sit down, Chair, I also want to highlight that the issue of reparations, if maybe it can be looked at, because we've heard that people have been receiving reparations, but we don't know where they go. If you can change where they go, let them not go to the chiefs or wherever they are going right now, and make sure that they actually come directly to the people who are affected. Thank you very much, Chair.
Greetings, Chair, and your colleagues, and everybody in the hall.
My name is Pelilim Tete, and from Zalaban to Ward Five. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy. As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy.
As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy.
As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy.
As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well, so that we can be able to express our views as the community. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes me very happy.
As I stand up, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Parliament has chosen to come to us, and not just come to us to tell us, but also to listen to us as well,
Who are always seeking to eh take advantage of situations and who are clever eh cleverer than the community. They took that training center and that training center was built in Iskauin. Up till now, we don't have the training center here in eh in our area, Gwambunambi. Eh I would like these things to be taken seriously in a sense that whenever eh these companies are coming in and they make pronouncements on 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 dealing with communities, let them build training centers where people will be equipped with skills eh and the know-how for them to be able to deal with these issues, whether it's issues of health and general skills for them to be able to participate and coexist with the company in areas that they live in. I know Chair, Chair, I know as I sit down, I would like to firstly ask a question. I know you said we should not ask a question, but this will be your food for thought as you go away. I would like to know, who are the producers of gas in South Africa? Secondly, Chair, I would like to also raise this issue which which also pertains to these companies. To say if these companies are from overseas, eh we know that if they are from overseas, they are only concerned with profits. They don't care about the community that we live in. And now that we are going to be going to national elections, eh it it's a shame that NERSA took twenty years to come to us and now we hear about bills eh after twenty years. And also the fact that we know that eh these companies, some of these companies, the shareholders are politicians. For example, our state president has shares in many companies and one of them is Bitvest. And Bitvest is is operating in these companies that are in our areas. For example, they hold everything from securities to cleaning staff and so on. So they are basically the monopoly in terms of carrying business in these in these companies. As as I sit down, may I also say this? Firstly, we would like to have these training centers that will be constructed, which will help the community to be skilled in terms of the risks that are associated with gas. Secondly, we would like the community to also actively participate in this industry. Because if the community does not participate, then it means that industry will not flourish in the area. We want to women particularly also to participate and benefit. And if these things don't happen, as the community will then stop these companies. Like for example, RPM where we live in Gwambunambi, will will go to the gates and block the gates of that company. Those companies will not function because they are operating in our area. So I would really, really like us to prevent a situation whereby eh like right now in RPM, you have a company from Finland that is stripping the boiler there eh whereas we have skills here in South Africa. And I think it's a shame that that is happening. So I urge you to consider and consider seriously the issue of community participation in this part in this particular in this particular industry. Thank you very much. Thank you, Co- 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 Thank you so much for those who have spoken, but may I make this request? It's a it's a request. As I said eh earlier on, let us try and not disadvantage our disadvantage ourselves. Eh if you are speaking and repeating something that has been said and speak for ten minutes, in actual fact, we have wasted twenty minutes. And if it's six of you are saying the same thing, then it means we've wasted an hour. Eh that is why at the beginning, I made that request eh and I said, I don't want to come back and repeat this. Let us try and keep to time and also be precise and to the point. It's just a request. So ngiyakela, kuma ngiti asu zupendul. Asu zupendula kui kribielo zisho umnyango. Asu onumnyango. Tinasite umnyango. Uma osiditi ufunu kwenza lok. Saati asie bantu siswa bantu kutibati. Ayen abso na pumila mase eh. Shuti senzi ndwe ra tu kiola lela bantu kutibati. Nivekwa asu zhu- asu zhu- asu zhu ma ya. Si zhu kansi ala le wadi si zhu ma ya si zhu spanba. Azosamukela la. Kuhleka mase basakla kila banya bagazas neki ashe office. So sufirega ashaye kemanje. Sfirega ashaye kempela. Abanya bazas no tibazo tumawu kichinyoka UNKANTO la bazas no tibazo tula benga onana kempela lomakans. So asa ngayezinto maningati siti uholme numezakti netu solalel. As any point eh ni you see, kunezijani ngas- eh ngasazi. Ni asfundisa nati. Zokcheli onkhesla bakona sebecha uta eh. Ngatika kempela kempela. Indas ngayongomakina nkulumi keden kaya sgozini ndawumbonumutu kulumanje. Kan kulumin ndwe yon. Inkenga nganama nisete mukutu ndwe ni kuluma yon iyon i show. Jobangishe i shikonde ngok. Lomte tumulungis awuti, awuti. Tena ukutu ndwe ishoyo ayionawaka ni tene. So timasasla nganisi ti godwa bantu basenda wene tiz. Jobang su- sugalana njakni nakpela. Man sugala sizo ye Eastern Cape unyako sa. Chavabazo fika basho nabato senyeza koba seku newe asas. So ngayeskwaza li kiskates ra tu sogya bantu. Godinde soyanza soya kon. Jobasi lana just pume mpumalanga. Mpu malanga sa yeh outing. Sa suga outing sese kese ten. Angfunu kunku rakes nyuzi donzo. Nkotla nmasengfalumshanga ngoba. Kuna bantu jabai chellelebo nokuti lasian bakona. Bazoba go skilis pampa nana opo. Abantu balaa eh king dretoayo. Uma benga funugu slalela bazoo show. Godwa kwazu tu kichelisa bantu imoteni bahambe olovu yon ki South Africa lena. Beladela na jugutu bazopaza misale na mshanga. Godwa uma ingabala. Be- ayah. Yonakela ndesi besi zamukuti sifim. Uma ingabala engwele zane. Sizo babona ngogucha banya bazozwe bazozabela oganyebesengala babebesoklisa bazozoz. Kona ang- ang- understand kuzo sukumuntu le kweni province. Asalu zoti umshanga noale andao. Uma ngauti ngi umshanga na ngi yiguona, full stop. Kona kasia esho ntotla ngelila ngayoyiza nina nmaniswe moye. Italo kutingrazo kuti sekfike eh ubaba ulanga. Oi luka lele committee. You can do this amarwena mi tal. And then eh sekfike nomama u- umalinga. Kuzo kela ngobis kataseko ngakti. Naleskates oto liku number one wami kur- kur number kur- kur roll two agaze. Eh number two na ngia emova enel okuzana. Number three na ngu eh. U number three baba wewelokuz. Ava role navy. Number three, number three ubaba, baba. Baba. Na ngu number two. Number three ubaba na ngu fagintekaki ubaba. Ay oh no, number four na ngu ya udowe fagilokuzanepo. Number five, number six, number, number eight. Isa isabam number eight ngala. Na ngu mama la payano number nine. Number ten. Eh. Number ten, baba eh 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 which I get, number ten. You're right, ne? Nufaka lababoktri na eleven and twelve. Thirteen, okay. Four, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, okay. Wow sixteen, nizolindaki itulezo agaze straight. As asamuksha yotabe nistrade godwa ke. Anguni kuluokuzanatoli kuma ngabe rengenzekulutu kumtitile uzo onana. Eh firstly, I I would like to address some of the issues that were raised eh earlier on eh from the chair. Let me clarify firstly that we are not the department eh that must be clear. We are a committee of parliament. The department is proposing the amendments on the bill as the department. And that is why we took it upon ourselves to come and listen to the people. And we cannot be choosy about when we come to the people. The amendment came and we decided to come. And if it coincides with elections, then so be it. Maybe it's a blessing in disguise. Because then it gives us enough time to talk to the people on their own without all the other eh bureaucracy that might come with eh eh elected officials. And also eh Mister Kumalo, since you are my brother-in-law, let me also clarify eh to you because you're my brother-in-law. Don't eh eh run away from saying you want training centers to be built because that is what we are here for. Do not try and do not doubt what you are saying eh as maybe thinking that is incorrect. Tell us, if you want training centers, tell us that no, the bill must make sure, it must compel those who are involved in the industry, reminding the companies to build training centers and then we'll deliberate on that. So please feel free. And then also another thing that I I I wanted to 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 highlight is that we eh as we are having these gatherings, we we know that there are people who are help and who've been following us, who are trying to destabilize or disturb these proceedings. Eh I don't understand why, but we came to speak to people of Ngorilesane and I don't think these people who are being passed in or shuttled here eh are are from here. If you don't want to go into a meeting, simply you just don't go to the meeting, full stop. So we can't be eh disturbed by people who are not from here. We've come to speak to the community and then I would like the community to speak. And then also I would also like to acknowledge eh the arrival of my two of my colleagues, eh Honorable Langa and Honorable Malinga, who have been eh that I've I've just introduced. And then also I'll take the last round of hands eh I've I've taken sixteen people and I would like all of you to have an opportunity to speak so that we speak straight to the point so that we'll be we'll be able to keep time. Thank you very much.
I'm greeting the community. I'm also greeting the chair. Yinga esti vananazo. Ngu kutumasboni parlamento, kubasi kere parlamento. My name is Bujue Somlo, I apologize. We are not here intent to- We have a concern here, when the company is coming here, they do not give us direction, what to do, whom to report to. And there is another thing that I would love to state before your chairperson. Your committee have pushed you to come here and the first thing, we do not have any knowledge about the dangers of this case. Chairperson, another thing, maybe it's the first and the last time to see you. On the following term, there is someone that will provide. And that particular individual will come with a different, that's differ from yours. What I would like to know from you, Mr. Chairperson, when will you come back and provide that with the answer? And because when we ask you the ans- when we ask you the questions, you do not provide us with the answers. I humbly request you, Chairperson, when you come back next time, I will request you to come along with those stakeholders who can able to answer us. The reason why I'm asking you is simply of the painful that I'm feeling. There is a more here. If ever there is a chemical that is bloomed, we have no knowledge how it's going to affect us, whether it's going to make us sick or what is going to happen with our lives. I hear some of people appreciating that eh there will be some development here. I do not under- I do not dispute the availability of the industries, but we will know what is the advantage of their arrival and their disadvantage. There are some people who have no knowledge how to protect themselves. You understand that there are people who well informed how to protect themselves. What about the other general communities who have no idea how to prevent this?
Okay, I'll go ahead and ilungis then, please. Umnyango uti. U faka i kribielo kumtecho okona. Kulezi kribielo sizo amukene sa umte. Kusho onaiti. In angifunle do- manjogune deti sithi unabozumbozo. Or sitha beka bantabasi. Siti ngapam goku ti committee liko trelona. Lithe asuzu kubantu sizu kuti abantu bonabati ningalezi kribielo. Akzo ni kribielo si committee. Baja angifunke ni ngabozumbozo. Umu ngabozumbozo manjogune zengenzispona. Umu tu utata bu tumillion maya ngapendula gatu tumillion ushugut. Kusugutimena kala ngia fumela nanu tumillion. Kungenza kangi shoma nguvula gatu ngenza kuti zonke lezi kribielo zisho la. Na tumasaslesesit, god, siti ay asu bonu kamba ras. Angifunke kubaskoniswe ni eh ni eh ni shilo. Na mimangkesi jenginga eto ngengekashla nganifinoza kuit. Eh bo ay le godwa ay angiboni uti ndwe yon. Angwasu godwa tu kuipendula la. Koba kusuguti sengi sengi imposa eh ya o amumbono kuokosa kuit. Banelunge loke nabolo xungu jobo babona be tulaj. Banelunge loke xungu mumanga bengi shu ndwa abanga yas. Kuta eh, stella genatius nige zitu bakaspeke yitimboni. Ayikunde ngafumele kilo wa. Two, asu lungis, sizen galomtecho. Sizen galomtecho. Kungenza gapapinde babo sizo yitazmasespreti. Nenza gapapinde babo yela babe isiluzimbele. Kukoni National Assembly, koni NCOPI. Uma tinasespreti le ngawa lomte lezi kribielo sesitnago sijulise. Kuzo ye parlamenti, parlamenti eh eh National Assembly, isulise le kui NCOPI. Eh NCOPI ke yile eh salama province sifundaswe. Ipinde kushale na 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 laba o- omaspala. Umebuela konabangaxo nabukuti ka. Ay nati ngapam goku ti status nu. Sizo ye kesi ozwa ukutabantu batini. Kungenza kaga unga tumusuboni NCOPI uta onanila ngapam bilini. Isabenza kanchalo ngipad ngoba lezi iluzialinga. Godwa zionile yon. Klu kubake kaba sizo amukubabiskat. Godwa aksho ngutunga abozumbozo siti. Kuyinkingu muzo sibo zumbozo. Ga lo kokishiwa yokelezi kribielo. Koba sezumnyango akzo nesit. I I just, I just want to clarify as the chair that the question is eh 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 we are not the department and we cannot make comments on the amendments because we are not, excuse me, we are not the department. We are the committee. We've come here to get your views so that as the committee, we can apply our minds, taking your views into account before coming to a decision. So if I if I respond to questions, it means I already have agreed or already have formulated opinion, which is not true. Because as I said, we are sitting here as different political parties, but we've come here to hear your views so that when we discuss this, we'll take your views into account. Eh thank you. I would like us to eh also take account of time eh so that we can get as many people to speak as possible. Thank you.
I'm lucky. I come, I'm coming from in Salabantu. Fortunately enough, I've worked with the community and the sector of business. What is most unfortunate eh eh is that what I heard yesterday? Actually, we should have eh the training should be conducted before the topic, the top people come to us. Eh as we are here in this room, there are some people when you talk about case, they can't tell you anything. Fortunately enough, I'm the one of those people who have have acknowledged about the case. Surrounding the issue of the employer and the companies. Because at some stage, one of the individual who is very eh spoken person, who come here, maybe have got a huge muscle, once he has spoken, everybody will agree with him.
I think just because eh the parliament has come through, it has been some sort of eh a boost. Mshimmanis, my name is Mshimmanis Lolo. Maybe in the industry, there needs to be a law that will determine, prescribe a certain radius, where then if there is a gas leak, it can be detected. For in- for instance, there are gases that eh do not have a smell and the belief is that a gas is is only a gas because of its smell. And there is a a gas that is called, that they call it gassy, kustik.
It's a tostick.
Tostick gas, which doesn't have a smell. And also the issue of training people. I would like to to know if if all these people are trained, what happens? Because they will not then get eh jobs eh because if you look at the rate eh it is very, very high. For example, if government can have programs, eh if I can give an example of of myself, I I trained in engineering. And if you were to give me two hours, I can round up people who are qualified, who amount to about three hundred here in this area alone. So that eh those people with the skills can actually go into companies and provide skills. And if those skills are not sufficient, then maybe we can be upskilled so that we can be able to participate as well in those companies. Thank you very much.
A great teacher, as well the committee. As well as the committee. I'm Sabong Akumada. Sorry? I'm coming from Okavango. The bill that you are here for? I'm happy because it's not yet amended and I believe that they are going, that they are going to go back and amend it. Hmm. There are some companies, when we're talking about transportation, there are some companies who are working the gas and there are some pipelines we are underground eh which make our lives in danger. And we have no knowledge about those. We really appreciate if the company can that, can conduct a workshop for the committee. So the committee will be fully aware if anything happen, how to, how they should do things. I will, I also would like to emphasize that if there is a side that is taking place, the committee should be fully aware that there is something that's going on. We like this bill to enforce the company who well are matured about how these things are being. So that even the black people can be eh actually promoted and knowledgeable about how these things are operating. We like this thing to be groomed from primary school up to high school level. So that the community can benefit, even the children of ours could could benefit from this. There is no way where the bill stipulates how the company are going to be punished, especially when you get sick. As I'm standing here, I'm partially blind. When I went to conduct a doctor, the doctor told me that eh I can't see properly. What I was told is that the place where I'm I'm living, it's it's eh there are firms and the the place is eh it's got a dust. Most of us, we are seriously ill. As some of of us have actually mentioned before you that they are suffering from asthma. And because we have got no money to to get help, so we like the bill to actually look after us on that. Eh I've even left even to work in the offices because I cannot able to work in the offices anymore.
Greetings to the chair and everyone in the house. Eh my name is Kulani. I I work in this area, but I'm from the Midlands area. Eh my background is in engineering. I've worked in several companies and excuse me, as somebody from the, from an engineering, engineering background, I may have knowledge in some of the health issues that are being discussed as the companies I work for, some are from local and others are from abroad. Eh I would like the bill to look at how eh i- if it considers uplifting black people for eh heft- hefty investment to be made in order to be able to meet the infrastructural requirements of of that particular type of eh intervention. I'm I'm mentioning this because gas is used in areas that are industrial and areas that are domestic eh respectively.
In terms of how eh they be, the the broad-based eh black empowerment would be implemented. Especially in terms of leadership, oh good team eh. Act, oh good, you know, I mentioned, I know, I go to, for example, oh good eh, it bill eh,
Benefit from economic development initiatives. And I'm speaking generally here, I'm not speaking from a political perspective. Speaking also around issues of ensuring that the community that is in the area is helped, is assisted to develop themselves without having to go through the BE route. Because the BE route has negative connotations. And we'd like the community to be able to do things themselves in a manner that will give them pride and also ensure that whatever that they are doing is sustainable. And also, how do we then ensure that the bill also fights against the systemic exclusion of people from participating in the industry? Where you find that the companies that are existing are using systems or they have systems in place that continuously exclude people from participating. I am paraphrasing what you said because it took too long, sir.
Ntata lujukwala, mokuti, siyafisuguti, mchambwe, et ikonsi, i'bil, ikonsidaruguti, mchambwe, there could be contributions, whether it's the contributions from already established companies, nor maybe it's a contribution mchambwe in terms of establishing a fund. Ezo guazuguti, sisewin sani closely nama companies that are already dealing in gas, which is supported either in terms of the skills that we already have or the businesses that we already have mchambwe in the local areas la. Ezo guazuguti, silelela nekona, uguti, nama model zabe nkluma ngao, siyafisuguti, especially with the support kahulmen, aguaz implementega, uguti. Gota gubbe nenvele, uguti, gufugulega bantabamia ma ngobutsho, lugu tiskatisningi. Norma ngabe ukono knense, gota nje, most of the businesses and most of the people especially abakala yo, abase ndaweni leze skulumakuzonajenga manje. Ucholuguti, badinge nje, just a little bit of help, uguti, baguaz fige ndaweni tili, baguaz gubambela. Ez nyisi. But otherwise, ben fisugvala nje, uguti, siya support, siya wasupporta nama initiatives, siya elagota nje, ngawi leadership, ku kune isandla in terms of implementing a program. Even if iso ba nama obstacles atsholaga lay, gotoa gubu uguti sitata lok, ogwenzegay, oguulhi, noknense, hiswode kisfunde gugu, uguti, silegenela anuguti kupuke kwenzega. Ngoba na gulasponuguti, saslemalekona, sesibene nama kama, uguti, spawnuguti gnaba bantabati la, ketege la, benefita yo. When na tisfune uguti ksebenze, gota fisuguti ksebenze, gende, leguaz impacta especially ndaweni, la sebenza.
I also would like to raise the issue of funding where if the bill can also create a situation whereby funds can be made available, then these funds should be used to uplift small businesses that would want to participate as well in this industry. I know for a fact that some businesses usually fail when they could have been just given a small cash or capital injection and for them to actually participate. I do not really would like to see a situation where this industry is only of benefit to a few. I really, really would like to employ you to look at models that can ensure that all businesses, especially small ones, do participate meaningfully in this industry. Thank you.
Ntata lilituba luki ngelela, mpati wollelo, ogumkondis. Ngobapelu, meyekumkondis, meyekwenzige luto.
I would like-
Ganyenepalame de loonge.
I would like to take this opportunity and greet the Director of Proceedings, the Chair, who is the Director, because without them, they would not have any progress.
Me neka malami ngungupriska, uko kupriska, Vilagazi.
My name is Priska Vilagazi, Koko Priska Vilagazi.
Ngikamoga pansi weti street ikingtroyo, ne maspala umxatuse iwa Tediwan, epetu Uspamalja, wa watabashé, ne ngosi upi esmthimbo.
I'm from Wat Dediwan under Umxatuse in Kingtroyo. I am led by Councillor Spamalja.
Spamalja.
Yes, and Chief Ngosi.
BSmthimbo.
BSmthimbo.
Ey, yino guchabula onge eguzukhaze. Akhaze guchabule e nguzwa zenganga manje.
I can't, I can't describe the happiness that I feel right now.
Uya wonu masa atsholele workshopi, ey, short notice, ngitya bon. Ah, zitukuzogwenzegani, watoluguti thunyelinkaka. Efige kti na senkotena ika malai, ituka uyokullega nju kulumena ngesu. Ngitya bon, watrimi bangetu, wesngisasngaga, ngos, ngos, sholoban. Ay, watola ga lugu tige uskullegil endu, ukhaze leyonki, njo goba kli, ngakakoke, yimlang kullegi, luguti. Nomis katisisfishan, ukona pelokpatega, eso kubega, sikfunde, usise.
I'm very happy because we had a workshop prior to this gathering and that workshop helped me a lot because they sent a very skilled person to explain to us what will happen and they even told us that we can speak in our own languages, hence I'm very happy. And I am hoping that even after today, the things that we are discussing will be able to help us going forward.
Ey, umani ngbona kinkoke, eganjii.
As you can see me dressed in this fashion.
Uzo suguti, ekigashele minangkamge mchagatine, uzo titegutwe nakshuti ksebenza wa Red Cross. Sa u Red Cross, u u u weng ksebenza kie na ngu facilitate. Gota wasupela ngo, elayezule, uzo tipe upelile kante koli napnapu, usekon, ye kenge tili, engazazi. Upela ngo twenty eighteen, gota ngakubega ngavolunji.
You might be confused seeing me dressed like this and think that maybe I work for Red Cross. No, I don't work for them anymore. I used to work for them but they closed down here in Zulu Land. But after they closed down, they still continued in other provinces like Houghting and others, but I continue to volunteer here in my area.
Eh, u u Red Cross? Ah, ay, kashen, kashen umbabaz.
Please, please, good people. Please, good people, give me a chance to believe what I need to speak about.
Inzo soye tuguti lasize, size la yini. Ille ame, ame, edmenti, ye, le pilewi yone se ngayo le ye kesi. Ngikonduguti, utronox sespanswaake, agasize, asondeze u Red Cross etuze. Ngoba, uyasiza, a traine, abantu, ye ngoba nje, si afetega. Ye 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 water pollution, ngitya bon. Siyawazu tisafetega, gota asitholili i i etukeshi, ekamoga wa Tronox, eshangane, no Red Cross. Iloka ngondugukhaze.
The bill as it is should be able to compel Tronox, for example, to partner with organizations like the Red Cross to get training for us as remember, we are getting sick, sometimes it might be from water pollution. Now, I believe as somebody from, who has been part of Red Cross, if Red Cross can partner with Tronox and we get training in these things, at least it can put us at a better position than we are in right now and that is what I want to share.
Manje, no Red Cross, usiza, ngobutu understanda, ma signs and symptoms. Ez ipo ezenzaga, ey kon, ekasvinase, piluniako.
So, Red Cross will help us to, because they can be, they are able to identify signs and symptoms of diseases that might exist or that exist in the area or in actually in your body yourself.
Siyatela ge futu, utronox alegelelega code, ngjongo wa esetuze wetu, egusfundi seni, u how to plant a vegetable and measurement, ya kon, uguti, eganjani, nsega njani, sibene understanding. Ngoba, usetuze wetu akenda weniye.
Would also like for Tronox to actually come and train us in terms of planting of vegetables, in terms of some of the things that need to be done because Tronox is in our area and they are operating within our community.
Aspeende, futu u u Tronox, asize, u how to register a cooperative, ne business plan, ne marketing, ne profile, ne profile, let, uguti, how to write.
And also to help us draft business plans, how to register a cooperative, profile and all those important processes.
Ye, ogunye futi, seluguti i koleze, omay, omay primary jengo Somopo, ngikamoga, Matlegane Primary, ne zini kole, aketuzwa, u u Tronox. Aguazuguti, abakela ama laboratory, uzebelula, understanda, imesne science.
Also for Tronox to also support schools in the area like Somoko, Matlegane and others by building laboratories in those schools so that children can be able to understand and also develop in medicine and science.
U Tronox futu agasize, eganjii. Ata ekay, abanta sebe kalkashio, jengo, goma deni, eskaweni, eh, nago Newcastle. Baswelo msebenza, bakalkashio, gota manje, u Tronox, msebenza fana na wa Tronox, agabakashi, bashelize, khae.
And also for Tronox to absorb people like from areas who have skills so that they can also have something to do, have employment instead of sitting at home.
Senkina, ngoba ngazo, kunehaming, ngibona kunidaba, misalasena sixty seven years. Ka ngilaleleno mangimtala, na kugo ogoksin.
Lastly?
Ngitimina, ngitela u Tronox, ngiatela, angfos, agasakele, ina ozokjimenjenala, engwilesan. Uguti, mugwazu tu esetsize, wenzesonkezi, asinakola, palikona ama ground. Gota, ugutu uyivota voto, ngalolo, kusha obo, ngikulumaloko ufaga, oba na sixty seven years. Ngibu ya, ah, gushuguti, minese niti mina, esen kulumanga. Ngibu ya epritola, ngibu ya eh, emanga wunge, ngena, yo esetsize, ngi, ngi, ngi strike asai pola, ngit. Ngialishaya ngabela, ngpetile. Ogobanga ngialo ngay konvi, tige beseni, ya, eh, not, eh, not west. Kushuti ngentengi atuin, abasa kele, ngoba ngubonilo, mpu melagushuguti, ngobuzomtala, lokokulunya, kura etukulunya, ye ye youth, youth, youth. Nomsumtala, unalituba, lokubegu nga gafe, mchabeni, wenzesintey ningi, uzupumi ndaweni ningi, ey, uguti. U u u, wehli stress, sokshabazu, gulu ngibona.
I also would like Tronox to build open air gymnasium so that we can be able to exercise. I know they've built these gymnasiums in other areas, would like them to build them in our area too. I am sixty seven years old, but because of exercising, I have been to, Mangawung, I've been to Pretoria, but I want to urge Tronox to build this in our community so that we can exercise and also live a healthy lifestyle. Thank you.
Sibona ngelala.
Thank you Chair.
Ne timbalake, umphagati nama kombe, ngonke, asemxatuse, ambe lumtangan obaldeki.
Thank you Chair and your delegation and all the comrades who are here in the community at large.
Ben kabanga mtsambo, uguti, I'll be covered, mchambwe, by Abanya, by, lezi, lezi. I was going to be covered by i kudume, eh, yes, isukumile wata, namanja, I'm not, I'm not yet covered.
As I was sitting down, I thought I'll be covered by the previous speakers, but up to this point, I haven't been covered.
Mchambwe, uguti, ngutlendosi, negay directive.
Maybe this will need for us to give this a directive.
Eh, mchambwe, ngibona, mutsal, uzu tala, omxangan. O, i kamalami, ngungosnati zongo.
My name is Gosnati Zongo.
Sugaa, ewat seventeen, eskaweni.
From what seventeen, eskaweni?
I'm one of the leaders, eh, organization, A N C.
I'm one of the A N C leaders in the area.
Mchambwe, irrevolutionary name, namuse wasar, gwaqta, mnetlek.
When I was still inside, my revolutionary name was Nedlek.
Mchambwe, ngitale, negay directive, utila apa ngabela, ipe posalo, mtsangan. Uguti, zo amenda i'bil, that was exclusive. Isye yenzie, we ibe inclusive.
Maybe let me give direction here, we are here to talk to an amendment in the bill that was exclusive. Now, it is, the effort is to make it inclusive.
Eh, sekala gubonganje, initiative, etatwe, portfolio committee, eh, parliament. Uguti, fige lapa, galisiskati, ibe tinga ngas.
Would like to thank the initiative taken by the portfolio committee for coming here at a time when they were really needed to be here.
Norma, Abanya, besebe shilo, mtsambo, bantabanga, ngentela ya. Uguti, mtsambe, difige, because after, eh, ngena yama ilekshie.
Even though others have made pronouncements based on their own opinions, such as the committee coming here after elections.
Norma, Abanya, sebe shilo, futi, utama councila la apa, ma councila nganaytembo.
And also others have pronounced that councillors here do not have stamps.
Gotoa, alende, enyenzile, ngampeni, initiative, ni tati le, is very important.
But the initiative you've taken is very, very important.
Ngoba, iso wenzala, ma councila la apa, nganaytembo, uguti, eme alapa, mchagatine, ewenzeservice delivery. Ayenze, eh, nomtanda, futi, az, uguti, enzali.
Because it will encourage these councillors who do not have stamps, for them to go to the community when they are doing service delivery, they then know what they need to do.
Nalo uguti, initiative, ni tati, ni tati, neskatesi, le. Pute, esin, esin, eh, 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 tinga ngas, ngoba nje, ngamange. Siyazuguti, ngamange, Abanya, bantabanga, ntsiweng, kuka nget, sisuwile, kanti, sikuta ngeto. Ladies or gentlemen, ngabela, si fuge lakudu, puti, ksebenza lakudu.
And also the initiative you've taken, you've taken it at a very opportune moment where others think that we have fallen down, where else we are not, we haven't fallen down, we are just kneeling.
Ngoba, le forum, esiguan, ngamange, is about service delivery.
Because the forum we're in today is about service delivery.
Owi, yo na ayenze, mchambwe, isi motibe, jeno gat, isi motibe, asikwa, minangitata, u tlendienzaga, le. Senati, is a revival and also is a clean, is a cleansing, ye organization.
I look at this as something that is very important because for me, it looks like a revival and cleansing of the organization.
Yinto je, ben kalanga lakudu, ben kabanga, uguti, mtsambe, ipo, zikali, nklumo, ngale operational program. Ye 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 kes, ben kabanga, mchambwe, ilokuza, nipali, portfolio committees, otsela, mchambwe, izindawa. Lapo le, le kese, tiskaperekona, la mxtatuse. Uguzi, mtsabena, tisitale, tismisela, noasaz, ugutima, si afetega, ngabela, i, imizi ipi, nyathelo, nama nama psikoshile. Ezo atata, uze, squaz, ngabela, singa affecting negatively, ile development, entega ngaga, anyle.
Also, I thought maybe we will be giving an indication as to where this gas has been found or identified here in our area so that we can also be on the lookout and be alert to the dangers and other things that might be associated with this finding.
Ngitimtampe, ogunye, ebem kabagutefud, bengabagutera kulu, if ever, besizo guaz. Uguti, ngoba, gucholaga, le kesi, ngabela, utuka amendoa, le, ekta two thousand and one, ibe, eh, teso ba inclusive. Ibe biasi, umani savanti, uguti, ngabela, umai amendoa, iso, mtsambe, ama timeframes, azo ba nini, mtsabeni, ah, eso kalakona ngas, opereta le ek.
Also-
Goba ngamaje, serire, uguti, ngabela, skuna ngabela, upasiniga, is service delivery, uba, ubantu, babone, ngabela, uguti. I'parame de le apela, nomphagatilo, o is service delivery, uyapela, and also is leading.
Also, I just wanted to check as to when the amendments are made. My interest is more on the implementation as to when the implementation or the timeframes for the implementations are. In order for us as people who are also responsible for service delivery in the community to know when to expect things to start happening because this is evidence that the parliament is alive and we also as people in the communities, as service delivery persons in the community are alive.
Lokugosiza lakulu, ngabela, ekukule, nisimpilo, nomphagatu, ekutibeng, no, no, baseskatele lakulu, yipta ma plekatenziwa, no chating, ngena yo escom, mtsambe, onama challenges, nama problems, omasebenza. If ever, gota le ek, ngabela, iso amendoa, ame, kenshade, uguti, ngabela, is biasi, auto, eh, addressing, ama problems, abantu, abamnyama, webin, disadvantage, kopa chelong time. Lokugosijabusaga kulu, kuta bantbasabona, ngabela, uguti, ngabela, each change is coming, uguti, change imminent.
I also want to speak to the act because I believe that it should be biased towards black people and I think we have grown tired of blackouts as a result of load shedding which shows that Escom is also struggling. Maybe this also will be an opportunity for us to come up with things that can also supplement that. So, I hope the amendments to this bill are also geared towards, biased towards people in general.
Ngibona, gastelan, kubega ngijado, ngainchelejata, uguti, ninga kataswe, mtsambe, uguti, Abanya, batiini, because, ngibona, tino ngabemshini, abo.
Thank you for this initiative and don't be discouraged by what other people are saying because some of us can see where you are headed with this initiative. Thank you.
Before, before baba kulumene, agengi challenge, eh. Nizo bonu, gutaskabange lani, ganjani. Angishuguti, nonke, ne ro. Abanda banyebilaglini, bafreba kulumo, bakulumis katesite. Masetumaji, masebekreti, waboniti, skatis, yahamba, bashiho. Manje, kufaleksolege, so tis, trinasale, seskulumane, ituli. Yona le, ndebenge, itelile, ka, uguti. Kuluma, five minutes wa, okodoke, uneke, zumoni. Ah, uguaz, fige mshanga, ne, nukulum- Ye, indenge shoguti, yabona, angishuguti, bahambile, bon. Gotoa, kunabanda, bafige, kala, labakulumo, bashi, totsa, ngabela. Ngiatela baguetu, yenzel, sina, ngilila, ngamakfiga, banyu, ngase, itina, sikabange lani. Ye, ngitige, kule, baba, befiga, lapakula, baba, ndu, bama entities. Ngitie, ugutu begele, ugutu zo kulumango wa. Omunya kulumamkosh, uguti, ukonosezonke, ngango wa, umesekreti, le, napuma. Manja, squaz, gubabamba, bantu, uguti, krapela, ngobu, sukulmele, sukamba, ngoba, weeno, kulumu, ten minutes, or, or more. So, ngiatela, je, nagweli, nila, ngaban, baguetu, asubisenzela ti, nasenzela, nani, uguti. Omakwa five minutes, five minutes, tolis kateslinga, na yo, sonke. Abantu bakulume, ay, ngoba, se, konaseneti, manjes, eseskoli, uguti, gonje, kufalele, siyogwenzindo itiza. Sisikela, je, baguetu, kubega, mdomkosi.
Chair, do I need to, okay. Just also to note from the Chair, I'm observing how inconsiderate we have been, some of us. Because some of us spoke earlier and they spoke for a long time and now that they are done, they are no longer here which means they are not really considering those who are still going to speak after them. May I urge you colleagues, members of the community to always adhere to set times that are set, not only in this gathering but in other gatherings as well so that will make full use and take full advantage of these gatherings. It is also unfair that people will talk for over the five minutes that they've been allocated and then all of a sudden remember that they have things that they need to do after they've spoken. So, let's please try and keep to the point and to the allocated time that we have been given. Thank you.
Bingelele, ngibona, stalo, ngetuba. Ngibingelele, ustalo, ne komitlaki, ngibingelele, nomphagaturo. Mchambwe, ngizoba, pritustalo, ngibonilela, pana, njoromba, u, tribiela, lumte, tolo. Oh, ome, pamgueni, utrumeno, raku mete, osuka, ewat seventeen, eskaweni. Mchambwe, stalo, o, aminganega kulu, ngibone, kukulunya, ngokpe, benefita, bantabamnyama, mangbuka, napai ek, njobak tribiela. So, ngitema, ngpega, norma, mangibuga, ngifisa, stalo, uguti, maskulma, ngokpe, benefita, bantabamnyama. Uguti, ma bengena, we industry, njorukuzo, ukukone, ikes industry, ma bengena. Abaguaz, gulegelelega, senati, ngokulumo, gota, asibona implementation, asbone, umnyango, uhambele, ngshayikolin. Usondele, ikolin, ngoba, ngabe, asina, i challenge, ngabu, uguti, mchambwe, simile, siyakuluma, sasana, uze skulumangan. Ngabe, snai, uguti, iye, iye, uguti, maskulma, ngengeesi, skulumangan. Maskulma, uguti, ina, unestalaxo, na kuhambikeesi, si afetega, njani, ezomphagati. Siyati, ngafutu, uguti, eh, 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 stalo, nitsin, sa sondele, na ktena, ndio, mphagati, nis, izimbozeto. Ni, saati, ni, hamsajoba, zini, njani, nyanguin. Ni, ucha, yel, nyangu, siyafisa, ogbona. Siyafisa, ogbona, abanda, abanda basha, belegelelega. Siyafisugbona, mphagati, upenefita, kusozongelezi, ndobe, ekren, ngosugu, yonkele, ndo, yenzega, ndaweni, tiumphagati. Inkampani, sisa, ndaweni, zeto, tinanjego, mphagati. Kukokonkele, lokostalo, siyafisuguti, asibone, inkampani, zobanda, banyama, silegelelega. Senati, ndeselegi, umutaktena, avule, inkampani, ktena, kpelega, njani. Asbone, umnyango, ulegelela, asbone, umnyango, usondele, bandwin, leguilo, konyabona, stalo.
Baba, sir, uguti, ikam. I, I, I was, I'm going to be, I was, I'm going to be brief. I'm Mr. Kumete, I'm also from the area. My issues were around education, if maybe we can be educated, starting from school level because I believe if we are going to participate in this industry, we need to have an understanding of how the industry or the gas works and also if we can be able to get community to participate, particularly at youth level as a young person, I think we need to be given enough empowerment for us to be able to meaningfully participate in the sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Ngibona, stalo, mtsangan, eh, parliament, sin, ngenel, na baho, bako, nela. Ngikhuwa, na wutangan, stalo. Stalo, ngzoba, mfishana, ntele, isma, ngitje, zokalu kulumani, stali, three minutes, khae, stali, papi. Ye, eh, kamalame, mufriedo, mungaramtian, eh, suka, eh, konala, ndaweni, guat twenty seven, ndaweni, petu, umsobi, swaramjani. Then, what can this, eh, what we can expect?
My, my name is Freedom, I'm from White Twenty Seven. I'm going to be very brief, I'll probably be the briefest of everyone because I'll speak to, I'll speak for only three minutes.
Chair of the committee, I heard about the program but I was not sure whether we're going to come or not. But by that, I heard that why he, I said, no, angiz, ngzos, ustalo, kutu, singo, ustalo, ngamaz. Uyaba kulumela, bantu, eh, umu, eh, o, 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 osebalelela, kula, bantu, tuzi, sosu, ndo, eh, 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 banlegi, lukusla.
I must say that I heard about the program and felt it was important for me to come here and also I'm very glad because the Chair I know is somebody who speaks for the people and listens to the people. So, as I'm here, I'm very, very happy.
Eh, stalo, mtsangan, uzokulumane, ndo, je, in that, one, upenefita, wabantu. Two, it's about the education. Three, it's about the protection of the environment and the society at large.
I'm going to talk about three things, one is the benefiting of the people, two is the, sorry, two is-
Two, it's about, it's about, it's about education.
Education and three is about the protection of the environment.
Yes. Kuballegi, le stalo, mtsangan, uzi, kulumda, bahu, upenefita, wabantu, ngoba, gua, bilu, oma, sizo, analyza, sna, bugu, upenefita, wabantu, kuso, ba, i, i, i problem.
We need to discuss the issue of how people benefit because if we don't discuss it, then the bill becomes not effective.
Eh, ogokala, ngzuksa, mitu, uguti, oma, wenziwa, xikudelola, ngoba, eh, angfunkama, eh, ndo, xikudelola, iso, bafenefita, lakula, bantu, ngihamsana na. Ngoba, skulumange, umut, talo, utumutenges, kakakatendran, uguaz, utukes, tendran, tete, for two weeks, two, three weeks. But man, utenges, kakendran, ubon, ay, ikolin, ndo, itenga. So, uguzo guaz, kseva, kumuntu, na, kumuntu, akala, guaz, ubon, imala, paketengate. Uguza, akumbega, tenges, nyis, ndo, ngakolo, kuminotu, yakupoga, uyawaz, uzu, ulegelela, nges, ndo, eh, ningi.
Firstly, if we're talking about people benefiting from this, I have looked at what is contained in these proposed amendments and I feel and I agree that this will really benefit the people. For example, if you are able to buy electricity for ten rand and it doesn't last you that long, then that really does not help or benefit the people. But if you can buy electricity for ten rand and it lasts you longer, that then means people are benefiting and that is what we want, for people to benefit in initiatives like this one.
Ogunye, stalo, mulesku, sina, nanaz, uguti, eh. Kuballegi, lukpenefita, wabantu, banyama, ngoba, sipamga, eskasinla, konabelu, ngaba, sapasa, konakaku. Basatsumnoto, uzu, basata, iden, lokomele, ka, uguti, kule, program, du, mglepilenzwa, abanda, banyama, siyabatina. As hundred percent because siyabani, kenga, uguti, abelu, bafige, sibene, nama programs, bachigbe, wana, futa, bawa, hetan. Norma, gwenzega, lokomene, ngri, private, se.
Also, I think we need to also be, remember that people have been exploited by white people for a long time. For example, we had land and our economic resources taken from us and now if we're having programs like these, we need to have people to be at the forefront of these particular programs, not to have the very same people who have been benefiting from them being the ones who are leading them as well.
Eh, norma, gungjaro, six, tzuzele, lukpenefita, wabantu, gota, nde, banlegi, luguti, nabala, bapenefita, with the most respect, is society and the community because uzo, zo, uguti, ktiwa, kumuntu, nanti, tenda, sabrama, pp, is, is into, zo, 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 sebenz, mphagati. Eh, phagelinga, nepautu, tso, ugutu, muta, aguaz, phagelinga, mi, phagelinga, ugutu, ogne, ekorai, sumuni, uchule, oksupla, ana, bo, they become, mafilia. So, aswafu, na, banyama, na, bazo, tige, besti, kule, le, pant, oma, gugutsenza, iti, volokmenti, siyabakontite, indeni, zuktsutu, kisa, wabo, nomphagati, be, bongan.
And also, in those who benefit from these programs also need to respect the community. For example, if people are given-
Lastly, lastly, o guti. O, o guti, o guti. Siakwelele, maje, nisbisele, wewo nitipanmbe. Sizo insa etana, ngoba, asugwazu, ngbozi, ngbozi. Sizo oposa, ndepakete, nkoja, siyafisa, guti, sbozi, ngbozi, ngoba. Angwazu, ngboza, lenzo, ngoba. Aniyaz, an, an, ayusha, aniyaz, koto, angwazu, anina, aman tukendla, ngani. Man tolitso, ben, nis, nis talale, o na, sizo, okuluma, na, ngoba. Kone, s, bakon, besakona, life. Guti, niabona, nukuti, kukunjanda, niabona, nukuskunjanda. A, anisizinga, du, niafan, so, le, ndo, ay, ay, zukuslegale. Koni, insenshi, nisibona, in, eskaluti, skubegena, eh, san, sanbe, na, niabon.
And also, I would like us, eh, chair, I would like to also implore that you invite the department as well, because eh, when you, when you are here, you, you did say that there are certain things that you cannot do. However, the department is the one that we can take and show some of these things that have been happening here. So please, eh, if you can get the department to come in and interact with us as well, I will appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Ni bengalele, i, i parliament, mpaagati.
Greetings to the parliamentary committee and the community.
Eh, ogokala, nje, slalo, o, nguschemiso, wakamguni.
I'm stembisomguni.
Eh, what nineteen umlalas.
What nineteen umlalas, municipality? Under King Tchaduayo?
Eh, ogokala, nje, ngufisa, ukuweza, eh, ngoba, sewe, okulume, na, nesidioza, ma mayini, pati, nfunukuweza, na, me, eyanga, giitii, nezin, nezin, zagala, ay.
The, the, the first thing that I would like to raise, eh, I know they've spoken about mines, but I would like to raise what pertains to the, the one that is in my area and what is happening there.
Ogokala, nje, ayiko, i, imeb, ekliye, eh, yoksiza, mpaagati, yolelo, loksiz, mpaagati. Ogokala, i mayini, se, indawenza, makus. Eh, eh, zibewe, uhulume, niglesin, daosamakus, ngoba, sa, apply, uhulume, for a license. Koto, ayiko, nje, indes treated, mpaagati, uzosugala, uyela, uzucholi, itingozao, siyi, nifuti, itingozo, mpaagati.
Firstly, there is no guideline in these areas which assists the community in terms of following those guidelines to get whatever that they require. And mind you, these areas are under the, the, the traditional leadership, because they were placed there by the, the government, and eh, they applied for licenses from the government, and the government granted them licenses. But in all that, there is no clear guideline to assist the community to access what is supposed to be accessed or beneficial to the communities in those areas.
Ogusbili, umuntu, besekuele, oguti, leli, committee, leli, ngoba, na, amandla, okendla, ngbozo, yitu. Ngelestcholalele, i department, eke, kfige, o, ngalo, nguti, department, bekfaya, kuwe, yone, fige, kala. Eh, nomienzimza, mewukazel, abantu, guti, yi, nilezo, kulunya, i committee, na, abantu. Ngoba, abantu, i committee, setzo, okuluma, na, ati, nje, abantu, abakazel, egi, luti, nezo, kunya, na, i committee, ben, asel, ngahambina, lutu, koto, ngentantage, abantu, bayiko, shela, la, pana, la, apaguze, bebe, na, information, i go, na, loko, kusnige, mthampi, advantage.
Also, I would, I would also like to, eh, eh, request that the department also eh participates in these eh particular hearings, because as the committee, some, some of the things, as you said, cannot be responded to from a committee's perspective. However, the department should have been the one that was eh initially running this hearing, so that the people can be able to ask questions. Eh, I'm glad though that some of the things eh people have been able to grasp on, to latch on to, and we are seeing progress here and there. I appreciate that a lot.
Eh, this thing is a, we find, there are two million. Inde, taloguti, abamsho, pebeshambile, pambili, njalo. Oguti, bona, bassebenz, agalenge, katiso, banlululu, labo, two million, bakone, mapanga. Laba, abantu, abasbegela, la, mafan, la, two million, abamnyama, base, parliamente, beitu. Basgali, guti, vela, nesfinyelele, glizindwa, i wona, ma red tape, wa, creator, kuse, tinasi, ngai, indawo. Oguphlungu, guti, ge, nje, ngoku, shogueslu, ngositi, the high, go, colder it becomes. Shuti, labantu, abaseku, attach, ba, tu, lapapant, zinga, akosebe, ngasagwazu, kabanga, indekachang, omuntoshupegi, le, ofana, nami, omunyo, seklinwa, ngoba, ama, izi, nda, ama, incentivesi, ama, parliamente, nazonsi, ndo, se, ukuluka, ku, lute, ngakabanga, inda, abaza, lapemakay, ekali.
And also, I would like to talk to this two, two million eh fine. Eh, for me, if, if you look at things, if I look at things, eh, during apartheid, eh, the people who benefited then, eh, the white people made a lot of money, and therefore, they have, or they can afford this two million fine in their, because they have those funds in their bank accounts. However, for small emerging participants in this sector, that two million is, is not really something that they would have. So you can see that it's also another way of keeping those people out of this particular sector. And I think this, the blame should be laid squarely at the people in parliament who have become immune or deaf to the requirements or the needs of the people on the ground. And as the English saying goes, the higher you go, the colder it becomes. It means they definitely become so detached that they don't know, or they can't imagine what the needs of an ordinary person like myself, or any other person who is in here, are. And therefore, they are not really accommodating them in, in the things that they put in place.
Besekuba, eh, kunumnyang, olawaga, monitari, nginkumbulaga, mthampi, mnyane, unaino, eh, tpeki. Yaga, wakiwalu, mnyang, wa, thuzo, monita, zongis, ndosagahulume. Koto, a, ulfine, uthulmenu, zo, kipa, ukaso, angalandili. Inde, tialtis, ndosngense, egi, luhulmenu, kipu, kaso, angalandi, lalshie, lekbant, alkiphele, kbona. Ngwenzi, sboni, abassebenz, balisi, mayin, lektwa, kashwa, konu, mpaagati. Bal kashwa, i, ngampani, eh, eh, yitu, elegi, loli, ome, tnezin. Ezikasha, fo, iskasha, nesile, awunare, legile, uwenza, uwe, intalo, nle, umsebenz, nazongis, nde, finalize. Ngobuhulmeni, yo, sekni, gili, license, then you can operate on your own.
Eh, eh, for example, government had a monitoring unit, a monitoring arm. However, that monitoring arm has been failing in its duty, because when it comes to issues of funding, eh, funding, fund, funds will be allocated, but nobody will follow through to check if these funds are being utilized for what they've been allocated for. I'll give you an example of a company, for example, that will eh hire their workers and eh say they will be conducting wellness programs for those workers, but you find that they don't follow through on those wellness programs which are meant to benefit their workers.
Eh, this thing, vala, ge, nguti, eh, o, nomaga, e, e, landele, lukrineli ti. Siakwele, gache, gache, slalo, mthampi, usnige, gache, gache, umsebenz, waleli, committee, panguich, le, parliamente, le, lholai. Ngoba, eh, liyafiga, lizo, sa, lizo, sboza, nesindwa. Si fisugwazu, liyafiga, nilizo, pe, guti, lizinda, lisboza, ngazo, za, za, shikulelo, mnyang, o, ne, parliamente, l'kulu. Liyafiga, nukzo, ipe, guti, zienze, ga, ngendele, yonayone, nama. Liyafiga, nje, malso, wenzangi, constitutional obligation, besel, sugali, hambel, sfunukuaz, lokona, koguti. Liyagwenza, in loko, nama, liyakrinangi, umsebenz, wazupelile, maje, ngelpin, de, lizo, litiwa, l'kuluma, ngendenzega, eh, mayini, ti.
Oh, I also, chair, would like to, to, to find out from the committee if it does conduct oversight in a sense that whatever that has been discussed here, will the committee also go and check for itself and, and verify if that is true? Eh, because we understand that they can sit in parliament and, and pass the bill, but would they, eh, would you, eh, and your committee be going to these areas and have a look to see that the things that have been raised here are actually the way that have been, they've been raised?
Eliyakrinangi, kuzu.
Lastly?
Eh, slalo, eh, la, ngampani, kchwa, Utronox. Ikona, na, ngapa, ngaki, chemthunzi.
And also, lastly, chair, I'm going to talk about this company called Tronox, which is also existing in my area, eh, in Mthunzini.
Utronoxi, umoya, ngasemthunzini, la, kshala, konaba, msho, pe, kuna, lenkte, kchwa, umthunzini, resident association. La, konaba, ama, rights, abona, le, teasta, bayenza, nazongis, ndo, they get to benefit, ndu, ne, finalize. Hamba, ngapa, chi, na, goba, ndu, goba, ndu, bamba, le, antole, ya, se, konisifon, yes, two, mila, kchwi, sinus. Esakula, sin, eke, indaweni, koto, mina, nje, ingan, n'zamezu, uthu, zombie, liznai. Koto, isengan, kwa, mina, ngnai. Nomuntu, inga, ingati, ngimlete, kaya, guti, situ, kubindlele, wafika, wana. Situ, kubindlele, wafika, wana, so, ah, ngibuzo, guti, kulesi, ndo, liz. Eh, beseku, mnyampe, si, 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 gangane, kia, klabi, suthis, bu, si, tutkia, gangane. Eh, besekuba, i, ndo, yukrin, oguti, ge. Ie, education, esini, wayo, ezikoli. Ali, hamsani, no, hulmenes, hamsana, nai. Naleskatu, hulmeni, fundisa, ngamakes, umuntu, puma, wa, metriku, plenke, ngamakes. So, ie, education, yitu, vela, sirochwa, ngaboom. Si figesenzis, we, i, ndo, si, fu, me, beses, kazel, wakamufa. Dabo, fane, kuwe, ne, ey, ey, koli, kuwe, nama, subject, detach, isis, ndo, ngempela, ngempela, sbalile, le, nezu, mkokola, epilweni, yitu. Ah, bona, galoko. Kwa, ngampani, le, le, mayini, ngisho, nje, ngere, ngbakonbe, abantu, ebensele, ama, pasari, aketia, aketia, abatu, abatu, khuba, gale, ngendele, le, yonayone. Pati, hulmeni, guslenje, guraiti.
Also, eh, in my area of Mthunzini, as I said, eh, the same company would go out of its way to make sure that they have programs in place and mechanisms in place to protect the white side of eh the community of Mthunzini. But in our area where black people live, there is no such thing. In fact, eh, now we have a prevalence of sinus, eh, which is something that was non-existent before. I mean, my two kids have, have a sinus problem. Even the person that eh I brought home to try and, and build a family with now has sinus because of coming to live in the area. So I think that the company needs to be held accountable for this and programs must be put in place to assist us. And then also, on the educational front, I believe that education should be responsive to the need of, the needs of the community and also be in line with the programs of the government. Because if education is not in line with the programs of the government, then it's not helping us as black people and things still continue to happen as they've been happening in the past. Thank you.
Eh, slalo, bestrelo, guti, kusdechele, i departmente, le. Bo, sengikshi. Niabon, abetan, ekuzelele, slalo, lkhone, kamalo, ekuzelele, sngisini, ngaxumpuyi.
Thank, thank you, chair.
Chairperson of the portfolio committee?
Chairperson of the portfolio committee?
Eh, honourable members of the parliament.
Honourable members of parliament?
Eh, members of the communities, of total observe, my name is Max Nane. Eh, I'm with my colleagues, Letitia, we're representing Richas Bay Industrial Development Zone. Eh, our submission is simple and straightforward. We are, Max Nane, our submission is simple and straightforward. We are unended with best power project, which is something that we're embracing, because it could resolve one of our problems, eh, of electricity. So, we need the legislative support, so to speak, as a facilitator in the support of those projects. We're here eh to support those eh companies that are coming here, but on other hand, we need that legislative eh, eh, that we could use so that we can engage these companies who are coming all over the country. We have a clear understanding on how we could support them within the ambit of a law that are permissible in South Africa. So, in a nutshell, that is it, and we want also, our submission also to the bill, is for the law to be explicit when it comes to PEE, because the tendency of a PEE is always going to be wide open, speaks about thirty percent, and then that could be misinterpreted and then blown out of proportion and it case requires. And companies like us will then fail and then it's something else. So, we need, it should be very clear on that, eh, on a PEE component, because if you look at the bill, it's books about eh, eh, economic development, socioeconomic activities. Specific on this eh guest to power project, we want some specifics so that it also assists us in implementing this project. Thank you very much.
Oh, ikamalame, ngu, Max Nane, eh, mina, ogwame, ge, kusobala, kakulu, gulula. Ben, kwele, guti, si, si, silelele, kuse, squazu, guti, sisiza, abantu, basukibisboza, maylanan, nezin, nezin, pateleni, na, amandla. Kikuzo, ngamandla, kakes, kubekse, niswa, ikes. Eh, ogunyakusbili, ben, kwele, guti, nis, nigeze, amandla, nama, ip, ip, bill, i, kulume, kubtakale, ngota, balue, pi, i. Nama, pegelala, wakabagati, be, tunde, seregi, le, nama, bamnyama. Ngoba, kukuyango, teti percent, kota, manje, agu, kobi, sa, lo, teti percent, uzogwenzwa, nganjaa, nukutussebenzi, gaparachi, komshalanlela, womtheto, lo, obegi. Ogwame, wili, ogonjo, ogdula, ngabonga, kakulu.
Okay. As, as, asbonge, kakulu. Eh, agen, kala, ngalo, ogusho. Ogokala, inje, leli, kumela. Siyibonge, kakulu. Nga, gusho, ge, lo, kwa, konaba, ta, ngzupendu, ngboza, ba, funu, gusho, guti, ipile, ngbozo, ngte, gengi, ipendu. Nomanga, upinda, nganga, guti, ipile, ngbozo, ngakesi, squazu, ipendu, labatii, si, te, gakes, pendu, ngbozo. Nge, kenga, gui, kaze, ndo, we, wezen, egiskatu, guto, umuntu, menzile, vela, besi, yawandu, musu, fagil, utingizu, guti. Ya, yaske, la, domi, nufana, no, katu, kabo, mupetu, katu, fige, indaweni, ti, wakla, meeting, ngiyangitii, avelo, kshumuntu, ya, yati, pume, kreni, nga, kusutu, eh, konge. Kota, abanbagitii, ange, kenz, ngampama, nganga, abanbagitii, ma, benz, ndo, eh, kfanile, sban, ngoma. Njelilin, pume, ngayo. Ngoba, wezen, yindawo, sisi, tumasukwetu, eh, tinle, kamalise, ngis, kutu, ele, bili, technical, shonja, ali. Dabo. Nina, niye, ki, bili, guti, technical, napuma, nina, technical. Dabo. Oguzole, gele. So, kwele, kunu, omala, ogusbili, yebe, ogukona, la, na, lapaya, sanu, itataga, ngani, mbono, yee. Nke, ngani, ninenda, ingati, aniko, shoo. Uma, guto, ayiti, yi, shu, guti, mi, na, ngiti, genzisboni. Genzeli, na, ksa, suma, kfiga, banye, ne, bill. Tinasi, ti, siyamkele, ne, bill. Koto, sinenkenga, yokala, ka, twenty million, oguti, oma, uti, twenty million, nufanile, ukokiwe. Zitini, ne, bill, aywenzu, twenty million, koto, iwenzu, esimeni, esinji, nangi, nangi, genzisboni. Kubanda, bangena, ayo, sikele, guti, babachola, ngali, ba, kuwe, nenye, ndele, zogwenzeka, ngayo. Kono, mfo, yato, kwa, washeli, nipuza, ngazi, ngeshu, disofu, melana, spiget, sana, ngali. Genzeli, uti, nukule, kuma, nkulum, ngonde, ngogo. Oti, nke, ngui, chiga, ezumbuzu. Ngena, kiti, zoba, ngengi, kuma, ngipendu. Uma, neti, nina, nizo, utatumshaba, sibeti, na, sa, gu tumshaba, umshaba, wa, makus. Ni, utate, ni, utate, lugu, tinundikes, ngampani, sekreni. Mi, nama, bekto, imina, benzo, shu, guti, kha, ogokala, af, an, an, ngivu, mi, indaba, yoguti, gutatwe, umshab. Utatwe, linkampani, sekreni. Endaweni, guti, chatelwe, abantu, bagitii, umutatwa, ubuiseni, kubat, genzisboni, nje. Bo, umu, ngboza, manje, uya, ngpok, oguti, ngipendu, lindo, engay, o, na, ey, committee. Three, ay, kono, ba, umgunu, ushaya, ngempela, s, 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 sakasa. Astanga, sukuazu, pendu, la, lutoka, nyakontu, ezwa, i committee. Si, te, zis, tribielo, zomnyang, olisi. Ideng, fume, la, nanai, ye, gi, o, ni, otwa, andi, ngake, uma, besi, ngania, telanga, la, klapu, ngake, sias, na, le, otu. Oguti, ogokomtheto, kinsile, bekfanele, tumnyang. Ogokwazwa, amba, ukale, wahamba, wayozwa, abantu, guti, batini. Ti, numa, sesbu, ya, yonados, obabuza, yonale, yo, nikenaya, yi, nukubantu, guzu, guti, uli, mthetwe, nipet. Koto, mnyang, o, askuazu, pe, lukussebenza, jengo, mnyang, jengo, baba, lo, kuso, ngakoli, sa, ba, ulu, 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 oguzo, sibalku. Yawo, nomu, ngigale. Sa, saksos, beseku, we, nokomba, maluge, parliamente, guti, akorabti. Goba, manje, fale, kchate, lenzo, mi, na, ngie, kwa, Tronox, genzisboni, roban, kuluma, koto, Tronox. Aso, kuto, Tronox, akbozu, guti, uyi, niwe, nakli, ngampani, susuzuku, zokulume, lumuntu. Ides, ngayenza, me, na, kizog, niku, mumuntu, oma, yekon, abaku, regional manager, secretary, akulume, ne, departmente. With departmente, finally, nama, inspectors. Abega, yuguti, lazing, ngampani, siyakomplaya, yi. Koda, manje, mu, negiluka, le, parliamente, fano, ngikiluka, le, parliamente, sivi, utalo, funde, lumuntu, umsebenz. Kwa, shu, fale, so, no, ke, plan, ne, lunga, lugu, tinshone, kona, eh, kona, niti, okesho, yiti, epsu, va, ngazi, beginza, nukota, ngvuge, xin, ngavuga, ulo, place, to, koto, la, ma, sivi. Dabo, goba, bala, wakabatu, shu, tu, kolu, mu, abetim, saba, dami, umsebenz. Khas, funu, minu, angta, ndukshala, abanbagitii, kutu, kshupega, kwabo, kuwe, ndo, yozo, shalaka. Askuazu, patis, ndo, zabantu, ti, oykulumele, askulumele, we, na, es, ngampani. Ulu, oguzo, na, njo, be, shonje. Uma, besa, be, be, i, group, be, ti, ti, na, jengoso, ma, business, balaa. Nai, keng, ufumele, gi, na, we, pa, itewi. Isakle, ndo, unu, ulu, oguzo, abak. Ni, fumele, gi, lupa, leli, committee, la, se, parliamente, nisho, i, kalose, nu, if, na, ges, ndo, se, mayini. Ben, bala, manje, ubabuti, eh, parliamente, ay, ngashi, wajutu, bakonim, konim, kulu, sinitati, ngoma. Angfige, labanye, ngieke, umu, ne, kenga, ne, kumbla, kokuluma, na. Ogutalsa, kota, ngay, guti, eh, parliamente, wanisenz, ama, kumbas, eh, parliamente, mangwa, abala, manja, o, twelve. So, angafana, nganjaa, no, ngke, o, twelve, eh, ndo, yotu. Asfume, la, ni, se, funu, kshugani, suhulmeni, ne, parliamente. Uhulmeni, le, ndo, twa, executive. I, parliamente, yi, lakshana, na, konama, kumbas, shuka, shuke, ne. Yonale, ndos, o, tumaspu, ma, seskete, wakama, public hearings, siye. Ti, na, gema, ze, shalapata, si, kote, limtribi, le, 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 zis, 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 shulan. Abayon, parliament, abayon, ikuka, fene. Nges, ngis, abayen, uhulmeni, gesu. They are not a government. It's parliament. It means, umthetu, ti, parliamente, li, shayumtheto. Uhulmen, wezen, sprints, akso, ndo, yenza, yo, isimthetwe. So, gefuna, na, ksa, sasanga, yenza, ndo, si, shabantu, besu, ah, uma, suda, le, shaya, shaya, kota, si, shayelun, ndo, sanga, shayelun, ndo, se, departmente, zon, no, se, departmente. Ogokrinengzo, gusho, glen, abanbagitii. Unewa, kanzelala, genzisboni, nje, unwa, kanzel. Uné, kunu, maspa, l, mthatus. Uné, district, kinkrejoa. Uné, province, kwa, zulu, na, dani. Ena, balunga, eh, eh, province. Kunale, nde, ndo, yiparlemente, if, nikazu, eloke, nishanga, ne, zis, fundazu. Lakal, zis, doktwa, ngama, constituency offices. Now, kulesi, ndo, ukwezu, o, three hundred and sixty-five. Ungape, gugutu, kuwaga, nganga, eh, parliamente, ngsenga, tabanye, ngzoba, por, chamba, batabayasi, le, otu. Umeshu, ko, i, committee, ne, parliamente, kwa, zufuka, nitig, sugoltis, siyakupi. Fanele, li, faginwadi, kusalo, oi, shalo. Kuwe, kusalo, oi, shalo, ovuma, yuguti, committee, ngahamba. Alfani, non, ngongo, shu. On, ngongo, shu, meti, ngabanga, guti, diabizo, indaweni, tizu, vesanangene, ati, badin, angukelipanoi, ngene, njelilin, ngene, njelilin, ngahamba. Umetan, bi, ashuzel, lugu, tu, hamba, nesda, fes, ngakanani, umsebenz, bakon. So, le, ndo, yoguti, kubandu, kuwe, ingati, uy, committee, wenzu, nama, yi, ngay, party, akti, ne, benza, loko. From nineteen ninety-four, amandla, mani, ma, nifunamin, mineng, ya, chab, minabi, yon, fagin, kingi, len. Amandla, mani, ka, cheke, len, ngala, wakala, babakwa, hulmeni. So, ngatanda, kanik, ideng, asa, gi, 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 nigeze, yon, na. Oguti, sibenzana, ma, constituency, oguti, constituency office, nifuti, baliwe, ANC constituency office, or Democratic Alliance constituency office, or EFF, kuti, i, avyon, ne, yeh, tu. Eh, parliamente, se, parliamentary constituency office, eh, nikeswe, lababantu, ngokwenja, labameleke, ngayo, parliamente. Koto, ne, lunga, lo, lo, kena, kulela, office. Unelunga, lo, la, umuntu, kula, constituency office, oti, sidenkenga, ka, Tronox, la. Siakwele, ukusbisele, usbanman, uman, tjan, srela, ju, kuspatelu, stalo, azale, enga, netwang, eh, parliamente, azale, nje, jengelunga. Elavu, muksebenza, luhulmeni. Uma, ngitu, hulmeni, gema, jengkuluma, ngay, parliamente, li, shangani, uhulmeni, executive. Kukmena, gema, jugu, ti, sen, ngabi, luguza. Amandla, ngay, parliamente, ayabizo, jengu, guti, umutia, kusala, uma, ngatanda, ngia, kwazu, shuti, sbanman, koba, katu, kuweni, kenga, endaweni, tize. Aw, kaw, kichimele, jenga, jengelunga, la, ne, l'committee, uy, olalela, guti, lababantu, bekala, bakalela. Nke, ngakes, kates, nings, kaba, guti, wong, gumuntu, shesa, sa, kutage, kiwe, ngakchela, manje, ma, si, puma, la, ngabashos, ndo, basho, same story. Uye, kha, uteg, basho, same story, zorgi, fundazu. Now, uma, sanga, tachake, city, every day. Nobody, we, ukono, busi, says, houses, ngampela. Ngboza, ngitaya, kosa, nda, sasi, yekyo, na, wampona, bo, besi, ndo, so, koto, ngelanga, kuluma, matrimis. Oguti, kwenza, galani, wa, RPM, ne, 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 kiga, sa, wampona. Itini, la, OT, ndaba, yele, oguzo, ne, umshaba, wa, makus, guti, ezinyinki, ngesi, letwe, zis, mayini. Gesimo, sa, eh, eh, kosi, zitini, bangla, kabata, sibenwadi, ngati, we. Gen nga, ye, guti, kwa, afi, ki, mayini, kwa, bangwi, maani. Asis, ye, kwa, koto, ngoba, ya, kwa, nguti, committee, kaza, fik, kota, njo, bantsi, zwil, le, la, na. Ni, abegiti, ndos, patis, a, ja, ali. Ni, abana, ni, zwil, inkinga, zetu. Siakwele, please, uma, sene, akushelo, le, ak, nisbegi, pessu, le, kului, lesi, nyesi, indawo. Ni, zegemaj, nengasanga, zolalela, uzospateli, bill, nanan, ni, zengi, ni, zonalela, je, lesi, inkinga, zetu, na, lesi. La, poka, sobses, shese, s, s, nganai, la, le, ndu, twas, ni, ni, twas, iska, eh, s, s, social, esigaya. Koto, akuzu, banga, ti, shukese, committee, because, jobasi, la, ne, bekfane, shukese, committee, in Cape Town. Koto, sa, ti, lesas, khati, sokshala, kwe, committee, goba, nama, committee, anosugu, aniskatashala, ngaso. Koto, uma, sese, zilesi, zwil, e, guluku. Be, ye, ye, zid, ndo, gesu, zotmas, be, kasa, bonu, guti, tu, ges, ngisi, priority, ngake, si, nu, prioritize, yi. Oguti, suzozla, lela, lesi, king. Koto, ti, numa, sese, zla, lela, sese, zla, lela, nguti, si, kwa, zufa, kuswe, bo, bo, kuyasho, guto, kukonabantu, departmente, ne, mnyangui. Angenza, kutabawenzo, umsebenzwa. Nomtheto, koto, fume, la, zoluku, zulu, nomtheto, basho, ayti, bati, uzama, kini, si, sanja. Kulesi, zid, do, ezinyezin, ne, ban, ne, ne, kala, ngaso, asas. Koto, kula, ababebekala, ngomtheto, ngomtheto, nomtheto, pele, ah, umuntu, kwe, okulene, makay, uma, na, umuntu, okulene, makay. Uya, kwazu, we, luku. Ay, kui, defo, shajengi, ngbozo. Baj, inke, ngare, ngay, guti, ah, ususha, usbi, anja, ali, spa, ya, goba, na, go, ngbozo, siyafu, vela, zofu, vela, lababantu, lo, mbegel, nomtheto. Lo, mbegel, nomtheto, upeginze, lugu, ti, zuti, kela, nganjaa, ngale, kwa. Usu, yabona, guto, zyafu, shala, oti, kela, nomtheto, si, zofala, le, ndaweni, foshagiyo. Akon, gusho, guto, busu, ivanile, zogale, le, ndaweni, foshagod, abasu, pereye, deba, foshifut, uwa, fale, twinde, sbi, si, si, asas, bonile, basa, bayafu, shafut, si, zofala, le. Nomtheto, sakiwa, kuto, two thousand and one, waksa, kiwis, ba. Siyafu, shage, maj, sshonja, ali. Siyafu, shasi, dige, sreli, ndela, utu, utu, u, 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 mnyang, na, yin, zele, zofala, kala. Bakwe, tu, siyabonge, kakulu, na, ngokbere, zelana, eh, oma, kukonala, spaza, misek, nipaza, misereka, na. Koda, ra, funu, ngampama, nganga, ngbonanga, ndo, ezingati, zi, kupulame. Lo, kweni, kshilo, okunye, akaku, mu, tokulumin, nde, ngayako, ngboni, labanye, sado, umuzi. Akaku, mu, tokulumin, nde, ngayako, so, ipega, si, boni, lo, guta, yi, yon, ibinge, eko, ibinge, yon, na, le, besi, zegay. Koda, si, ambisaranja, nde, la, kfanile, li, eko. Siyabonge, kakulu, eh, hulmeni, hulmeni, sugumiseni, na, nasuku, me. I, parliamente, di, sibenziseni, aw, ki, gugu, tu, zue, eko, na. Upegisimo, ubusu, konda, ngokon. Siyabonge, kakulu, ni, hambegasi.